I want to thank everybody for coming to this literally meeting of the business board, city council, office. At this time. Will you call the ordinance? You want to close your session, I'm sorry. You're right. I would like to have motion closed in the second session.
I make a motion to close the second session, second.
The second. So there's second, haven't seen it.
Yes, she got second.
Okay. Property move to second, in discussion. All those favor. That goes to the second session, this is first, we call it as well. This is Mayor William Bill Edwards, if. Mayor Proton Mark Baker. When. Councilmember Catherine Rowan.
Present.
Councilmember Carver Lee the Doug.
Present.
Councilmember Helen Zee Willis.
Present.
Councilmember Naomi Gilliard.
Here.
Councilmember Rodney Jackson.
Here.
And Councilmember Lee. Present. The mayor, you have four. And chapter? Don't alcohol it then. Make sure chapter one here. Get our thing and do it quickly.
Father heaven above, Lord, it is again that we come before you as humbly as we know how. Asking your blessings upon this meeting of our mayor and council as they come together to conduct the business of this city. Father, is our prayer that this meeting and all that is discussed here will be productive, that it will edify the lives of those in this city, and that it will be pleasing and acceptable to you. Lord, we ask that you continue to bless our elected officials. Be with them, Father, as they lead our city. Bless their heads with wisdom and stamina, Lord. We also ask that you be with our first responders, all of those who are in our public safety department. Lord, we ask that you put your hand of protection around them, Father, as they serve us. Lord, we ask that as we move forty, the city continues to grow and to be all that you would have it to be, to touch the lives of our residents, but also to be that city on a hill that sets an example for all those to see, and may continue to do the work that is pleasing to you. Lord, we offer this prayer in the same in the name of your son Jesus, as if your heart had agreed, said. Amen.
United States of America, and to the beloved and which stands one nation under God in his fold with the liberty of the US.
This is sir. The mayor, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, before we get started, I want to press a question from Mr. Colley.
Yeah, we just had a very special birthday on Sunday. It was for the face of District Three, the place to be, this thousand words. We want to wish her happy birthday, and we all have a part in signing.
Well, happy birthday. Happy birthday. All right, who's first? Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have several items on today's consensus agenda, letters A through H as printed. Do you have any votes in action, in the second round? Correct, no action taken. Doing exactly what you said. All right, where are we now? Um, consideration of adopting the consensus. How would I take a motion? To adopt the consensus?
Oh, no, I need to make a request.
I need to request that we, I need further discussion on request of moving emergency move repairs.
Your motion, move that to the?
Yes, I'm moving that, we move that to the regular agenda.
Second.
The property move to second, in discussion. All those in favor, moving this to the regular agenda. Raise your hand. That passes. I'm going to take a motion to approve the consensus.
I move that we approve the consensus therefore, excuse me, September twenty-four and twenty-eight.
Property move to second, in discussion. Carry none, all those in favor. If that passes, this is sir. The next item on your agenda is approval of the regular meeting agenda.
I move that we approve the regular meeting agenda.
All those.
For given that September twenty-fourth.
Is that second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the city manager is requesting for your consideration to add two items. If I'm stating this correctly, Mr. Manager. I'm going to say approval before you go further. You go add and add state to emergency.
Yes. The legislative agenda package, council has asked that there be an official vote on that, and so it is requested by our delegation that it actually be submitted to them on the twentieth. But remember, we distributed it to the council and received some feedback, but if you have to officially approve it, you really have to do it tonight. The second one is the zoning contract that I think you guys are familiar with. Well, to be able to incur those funds in FY eighteen, which we have to do, because it is funded half in eighteen and the balance in nineteen. And so this is your last meeting of eighteen, and so you have to be able to approve that contract that authorized us today to enter into it, so that we can incur the funds in eighteen, the half portion, and then the balance in nineteen.
Okay.
So adding this to the agenda, we will have discussion for the?
Oh, yes, yes.
The city attorney also has an item as well, and that's previously discussed. This is.
Go ahead, I'll take a moment. Yeah, for first read.
Okay, I have to start at first, okay. So there's an ordinance, and you distributed this already?
No, I have not, but I have copies to distribute, and if you approve.
Okay. I'm just informing you of the request for an amendment, so we had two requests from the city manager, and now we have one from the city attorney. Can this is approved?
Well, mayor, I'd just like to clarify that you know, your code says that if you disfavor it, it's not an emergency, but you don't have a requirement that it be an emergency, although I do think this is an emergency in the sense of establishing sanitation, preventing the transition period and having the first read today, so that we have a secondary priority for October first.
The mayor level lines with the work session, the sanitation model that we talked about, which we're, I guess, coining the Sandy Spring model, but this ordinance is in line with that.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Let's vote. We got to put amendments. Your motion, they do the amendments.
Yes, my motion is to approve the regular agenda for Tuesday, September twenty-four, to approve the amendments, which is the legislative agenda, the sanitation ordinance, and the zoning, um, contract.
Second. Property move to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That passes. And that takes you to public comment. So far, we have received ten speaker cards. The first three speakers would please approach the podium at this time. Mr. A.W. Davis, Mr. Charles Mitchell, and Mr. Jason Summers.
Talking just at the same time. My name is A.W. Davis, I live in District Four. Voltaire said, imagination is the curse of seeing things that they should be as opposed to as they are. Ten years ago, I spoke to Commissioner Edwards in regards to a bullet train going from Fulton Industrial to the Port of Savannah. It would have given you an inland port. The government has designated two places in Georgia to have that designation. It would be in your interest to petition the next governor to declare this area also as an inland port. Also, ten years ago, I spoke to the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, and this is what I said to them, and as I was saying to you this afternoon. In the year 2023, once the Panama Canal Zone is widened and the Port of Savannah is deepened, there will be a $2 trillion increase in the amount of goods that come through the Panama Canal Zone. You only want five percent of that $2 trillion. For those of us that went to public school, that is $100 billion. This is the reason why your logistics plan is critical, and you don't have one. Georgia does not have a comprehensive logistics plan. This is the reason why any lawyer that files suit against any municipality will win, because you cannot block trucking, and you don't even have a logistics plan. I ask you to join with other municipalities in this area and try and formulate one. This would be in the best interest of all citizens. Enjoy your afternoon, and always be God bless each of you.
With Mr. Mike Taylor and his later colleagues approach the podium, following his direction.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, staff, and fellow citizens. My name is Charles Mitchell, I reside in the Fookdale portion of District Four. I've come this evening and applaud the mayor and council and staff's consideration of the Sandy Springs model for sanitation. I think that gives us a lot of flexibility and opportunity for some expansion beyond what we're looking at right now. Also, it keeps us from having to deal with the nuts and bolts of having to respond to customer complaints, so you don't have to fledge and worry about that. I think it's a good way to go, so thank you for that consideration. Talking of something this evening that is not on the agenda, but it is on a lot of people's minds, that is our truck ordinance. I understand that we've been asked to consider some more compromises on our restrictions. Right now, we're being asked to give up some roads that are critical. The, what's happening, the reason why we went about this truck ordinance was to protect the health and safety of our citizens and our residents. Trucks, it's almost obvious, they're much heavier, they have longer stopping distance in passenger vehicles, they produce the fumes and so forth. The roads that we have, the two lane roads we have in South Fulton, were neither designed for that weight of trucks, nor the stopping site distance necessary to stop these trucks. The consideration is also about some bridges. We have some bridges out there that are weight restricted, that they want to open this truck, this truck traffic section. That is, that just hurts us in the long run, because we're going to have to maintain and replace those bridges. The concern for the truck ordinance was help to prevent or minimize conflict that we would have between trucks, the passenger vehicles, some driven by new and young drivers, a lot of us elderly also. We're trying to minimize that conflict, and I think that would be helpful by not giving in on any compromise to the elders that are asking for the additional plate or, excuse me, restrictions being given. Thank you very much. Also, when we were first looking at doing the city, we recognized we didn't want to follow some of the mistakes of our sister new cities, and that was having to go to the third party or outside sources, because it wound up hurting them in the long run financially. And so if we can minimize that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, council, and I want to speak. My name is Mike Taylor, I reside in District Four. First, I want to say that I recognize each and every one of you who are doing for our city. Personally, it's just one says, I appreciate you guys, I really appreciate it. But my comment is that, I'm playing, I'm saying that. My comment tonight really directed at our commissioners, and the same thing that I was going to say in regard to truck traffic. Commissioners, I implore you to allow the city of South Fulton to keep the eighteen week, eighteen wheel truck traffic ordinance in effect as it is written. We need you to support our city prohibition of commercial semi-truck traffic on residential streets. Having this type of truck traffic on small residential streets serves no community benefit, it only creates both physical and financial risk for our city and certainly my district, I threw that in there. There are indeed other routes these trucks can travel. Commercial convenience should not outweigh the will of the people. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Carter Collins, Mr. Stan Coleman, Mr. Melford McRae.
Good evening, mayor and council. First of all, I would like to thank you for attending the commissions meeting last week, for all your effort that you put into it. I would like to talk about the truck ordinance. I was, in that meeting, I learned that a bill had been passed by the state senate, which gives Fulton County the authority to have made decisions for the city. When this bill was passed, it appears as though that Fulton County does not have the authority or cannot make decisions on any of the other cities in the county.
That's all. Go ahead.
As someone manipulated the state senate to pass the bill for the county, and in this bill, it appears that the people that made the decision, they are more involved financially, as opposed to us being environmentally protected. So therefore, the issues of today that we face environmentally will affect us environmentally in the future. So I ask all of you to please come and stand, so that the commissioners can look at us and decide that our future is more important than us being on this earth financially with these businesses. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman, Mr. Melford McRae, and Mr. Don Johnson.
Happy birthday. My name is Stan Coleman, District Four. I've spoken to you before, but today I'm speaking to you as the Ashwood Estates HOA president. I happen to have sent each of you a letter, and I want to specifically speak to you, not about the city this time, but specifically where I live. I've called out Short Road and also say Cedar Grove Road, so I'd like you to understand something, that the portion of Short Road where I live, there are actually thirty-nine homes, that is between Cedar Grove Road and South Fulton Parkway. Twenty-one of those homes are in Ashwood Estates, when we've got one way in and one way out, that's Short Road. Okay? Portions of Short Road are very narrow, it's hilly, okay, and there are three blind spots. At the same time, if you like fish, country boys like me, there's a lake there. The lake spans both sides of the road. It does, it spills over, you might think it doesn't, but there are lily pads and all that, the mayor's shaking his head. Its prone to flooding at times, okay? Sometimes in a heavy rain, it'll flood, because again, it's in a dip, right? And there are no sidewalks, but sometimes folks like to walk, they'll carry a flashlight or some light colored clothing and that sort of thing. So I say all this to tell you this, I understand that that Short Road and portions of Cedar Grove Road are being considered as truck routes. That would be an absolute abysmal decision. The one thing that I did not mention in my letter that I thought about on the way up here is, there's actually school bus stops there, with the very few stoplights that there are along the road. It is just a terrible, terrible idea. If you don't know that portion of Short Road, or even the back roads in Cedar Grove Road, just drive them, it'll take you two minutes, and you'll instantly realize this is a terrible place for trucks. So think, poorly lit in some sections, you've got school bus stops and semi-trucks. Now who would do that? It's a terrible, terrible idea. So I understand, and I know you fought to keep trucks off our streets, there are some concessions you'll have to make. I only ask you to make intelligent decisions. I know you will, but Short Road, Cedar Road, not a good decision. Thank you, happy birthday.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. My name is Melvin McRae, I'm a business owner, a micro business owner in the area of District One. Thank you for helping us, by the way. My comment is directly on M-18-005, and I think it's a 15, yeah, I know it's really early, so we won't get on there. That is, that you have placed a business, that, I mean, it's going to be great for us not to have the community over to West End. Excuse me. When that zoning case is called, we'll call you back up, because that'll be during the zoning portion of tonight. So is that, am I speaking on something? Yeah, this is the public comment portion of the meeting, where you speak on all other county, city related issues. Well, I'd love to say all you guys have been a great job. I think you make sure Mr. Johnson isn't the same. I do believe we also received a card from Mr. Rich Wilkins, that's also for that same zoning case.
Right.
And I'm not sure about Ms. Hurd, that may be for a zoning case as well.
He is.
Okay. Right, and then no other speakers.
Mr. Mayor, you have four. Just concerning the truck, um, the truck ordinance. I just want to tell the residents that yes, we did these last Friday, these were, some of my colleagues, we met with Union City Attorney, met with the warehouse attorneys, the East One attorneys, and they are asking for six more concessions. We, most of us are not inclined to accept these concessions, but I'm going to speak specifically to District Three residents. There was only one resident who showed up to the county commission meeting of District Three last week. At the next commission meeting, we need that house packed out. I'm constantly getting emails and complaints of truck ordinance, I mean, of trucks roaming through communities, but I can't fight this by myself. So I need you all to please show up if you all want this truck ordinance enforced. They're asking for the two concessions for District Three, they're asking to allow trucks to come down Stonewall Taylor Road to Union Road, and they're also asking for trucks to be allowed to come down one more road between South Fulton Parkway and Old Pass, D.C.
Thank you so much. Attention to the rezoning portion of today's meeting.
Good evening, mayor and council. The House implores modification requests for property located at 3900 Cascade Road. The advocate, Mr. Jason Summer, is requesting me to modify existing case of Z-85014. You're seeing two different identifications of conditions, the first for the existing condition are items from 1985, and then to the front right, it'll be 2018. Those items, and they're requesting is to allow them to have the codes that are more of today's standard, which means any C1 zoning would have to have these same requests, so there's nothing too far fetched for their request right now. They're also requesting to have a four-story self-storage building located in District One. This case was originally deferred back on the 28th of August. As you can see, these properties have, this one property, C1, has surrounding zones of O and I or commercial. It's important to note that the residential properties of R and three either have a church or school or both, so there are not homes located there. However, there is a home located on O and I, but we're not certain that's a residential property being used for that, or is that, obviously that looks like a home, but it is in fact zoned O and I. This is the property site plan, this is the site plan you'll be considering tonight for approval. This property has about 24 parking spaces with two marked stops, and it's also showing the curb cuts that you will have on this property, I mentioned before, four stories. So the site plan has about 700 units for self-storage. It also will comply with the overlay of Cascade, and it's also giving you more in-depth ideas as how the business will be operated with the office hours as well as the access hours. So one thing to make sure, it's important to note, these brick limits have the same heights as far as the 1984 case, just to give you an idea of what we're changing. The 1984 case has the same height requirement as today, however, the signs were a little more lenient back then, allowing up to 60 square feet of a sign, and then it's on adjacent to properties within single family back then. So just to let you know, those properties are no longer single family, they're now changed over to either commercial or office. So those residential pieces are no longer. Therefore, staff recommended approval of their request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council, thank you, staff. My name is Jason Summer, out of the 4310 Grand U.A., Marietta, Georgia. I'm proposing to build a Class A climate control multi-level self-storage and business center. This development will be 100% compliant with the C1 zoning code and conform to the Cascade overlay district. In addition, actually, our design standards and building will surpass the Cascade Road overlay districts in quality, and it's really going to be a beautiful project. Over the past six months, my brother Aaron and I have been meeting with Cascade Road community. We've met with more than 60 residents, business leaders, planning staff, government officials, and law enforcement. We have more than 15 separate meetings, in addition to the community zoning information meeting, and two public participation meetings. At our city council meeting last month, the motion was deferred, we actually suggested it be deferred, so we could meet with one more neighborhood association, and that was the Cascade Manor Homeowners Association. We have come to agreement with them, we'd love to show you what we've done, if staff would allow us to pass this out to the council. Basically, we are requesting null variances from the code that were approved, the property will be developed under the C1 zoning code and the Cascade development guidelines. So what we're passing out, our renderings of the property, site plan, as well as a letter of support from Mr. Michael Tyler, who's the president of the Cascade Manor Homeowners Association. In working with the community, we have redesigned the property from four stories to three stories. We've created an underground retention pond, so there's no retention above ground. These were all considerations done for the community. We've positioned the building away from Cascade Road. We've created what you see in front of you, council, council people, that is a Williamsburg style, with manser roofs, gables, dormers, extra window shutters, and all brick facade on Cascade Road, and all brick facade on Kimberly Road. We've agreed to reduce the monument sign from six feet to four feet. We've changed the monument sign to all bricks. We've closed the driveway to 3915 Cascade Road, that is Dr. Carney's office, and a shared driveway, we voluntarily closed that driveway, so there will be no curb cuts on Cascade Road. We've eliminated Sunday office hours, we've added a business center, where people can receive their mail, where they can pack services without a conference room, and they'll have the ability to use our copy services. Two other considerations, we wanted to focus on local hiring, that was a request of the Cascade Manor Association, and we want to include local contractors and subcontractors of bidding. So today, what I'm asking is to modify the 1985 zoning to, for 3900 Cascade Road to the current C1 code. Thank you.
How about a republic hearing? We want four or kids. You been with him? Ben, you more of him?
What'd you say, ma'am? Ben to Mike in District Four. I have been too excited about Jason and Aaron's project, I think is mine to know. I have been too excited about Jason and Aaron's project, I think is mine to know. It's, it goes back to the days when family dollars didn't even be considered. We have a wonderful storage facility, air, air conditioning, which is made it sometimes people have too much faith for work. Mailboxes, mail delivery, packages, delivery, conference room, meeting rooms, coffee, you know, we, we don't have a place in testing where the drink can come to within me. So, he's reduced the height, he's eliminated the shared driveway, and he's got no curb cut on Cascade Road. I think all of those points are attributed to Jason and Aaron, who have been exemplary, and I'm too excited to count his name as in my community. So, I told Jason, I said, "If ever we have workshops, we will come and teach." This young man can teach how to get a project through, uh, the serious south of Boston. So, I just hope you will approve him and his recommendations for modifications to an old zoning case way back in 85. Thank you very much.
Anybody else for a question? Hearing now, a republic hearing. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it was getting a little confusing because I thought they were gonna call on names after. All right, okay. Nonetheless, I wanna keep everything happy. I really do. Uh, you heard a lot of different things, but I'm speaking from the Cascade Business and Residents Association. So, I'm talking about home-based businesses, and, and you heard about the services that they wanna provide, which is so important, very important, especially trying to, people are leaving packages and, and they can't get them, they don't get them signed. I had a package, two weeks couldn't get it signed, and so, that, that, that hurt my business. But, having that facility will make a difference. They're corporate citizens, and what I mean by that is that since they started from April, they've never missed any of our meetings, they never missed any of our cleanup, they are corporate citizens. From community benefits, you've heard about that, storage, et cetera. Also, I've had the experience of having storage there for many years on Old National, and I got exemplary, uh, services and got, because of their meeting room, I was able to get a lot of great contracts. So, again, I'm just for it. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. One more person for us, please. No? I think you have, was that Mr. Wilkins?
Yes.
Okay. And there, there are a couple of other folks that are here. Uh, Mr. McRae, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Hurd, if you could all just come down the aisle.
All right. I'm, I'm, uh, Mr. Johnson. Um, my name is Don Johnson. Um, I'm, uh, a resident of Cascade Manor neighborhood. Uh, our president is Michael Tyler. Uh, and I guess I should identify that this is a part of District One. So, what, what I want to, uh, convey to y'all is that I am in favor of the storage facility at 3900 Cascade Road, and the reasons being is that, uh, this is the kind of business that would not be intrusive to our neighborhoods. Uh, actually, I, I think this will be a benefit to us. Uh, I don't anticipate any traffic concerns, uh, nothing compared to what we get from, um, our neighborhood churches. I don't anticipate any, uh, attracting of, uh, crime, uh, et cetera. I've been, had, I've, I've actually had the good fortune of meeting, uh, Jason and Aaron Summers and Banji, as I just mentioned, and, uh, I've been very impressed with their willingness to, uh, work with our communities. Uh, they have been very accommodating to align their building designs to the wishes of our community, uh, and especially from, uh, the Cascade Manor standpoint, uh, which, uh, our, the industry or subdivision, uh, actually allows us to pass by the location where the storage facility would be built, so it has a direct impact on, on us and, and our tribal state.
Be aware of this, please, before someone's standing.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, just wanna say that, uh, Jason and Aaron are, are representative of the kind of business owners that will be a great partnership, uh, to our neighborhood. So, again, with this in mind, uh, I'm in favor with the storage facility, and, uh, I vote Banji and Hurd excited for approval. Thank you for your statement.
Next person, come on in.
Good afternoon, again, um, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thanks for having me, and I wanna be quick and announce early, as I said before. I'm, um, all in favor of the business, um, coming to our local area. It's, I think it's a great opportunity for us to keep our money in southwest area. Um, I don't know if anyone's had the opportunity of doing any kind of work at Staples, you know, calm down, but, um, this, you know, we, we would rather get better service than I think we can with Jason and, I know Jason, and rather than helping us, um, I'd like to give that bag, you know, a little heavier, but he helps us in really quite a bit, and I think we'll get quite a bit better service, um, in, in, in lots of supporting small businesses and, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I will throw the public hearing. Let me just say to you two guys, this is the way to do it. You know what I'm doing, this is the way to do it, and you understand. Enjoy this time, I intend to leave.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, zoning application on 18-0-02 for 3900 Cascade Road.
Please go back over there. The property move is second. Uh, in discussion, hearing now, all of those in favor, that passes U-Deb.
Okay, Mayor and Council, this item is a use permit, um, item number U-18-0-02 for property located at 3910 Old Fairland Road. Um, Ms. Mathis, for priors today, is requesting to have a group home, um, increased to five to eight children at this location. Uh, this property is located within Council District Three. Planning Commission is recommending denial of this request. Uh, you're seeing here where the adjacent properties are all zoned residential, Old Fairland. You're also seeing where the star is located, the top left is where the property is located. Uh, it sits kind of far into every piece of property, uh, not immediately adjacent residential immediately. Uh, you're seeing at the top right, you're seeing how the floor plan is for the home, and then at the far left, uh, bottom, you're seeing proposed site plan has no changes. Existing 2,690 square feet home, uh, it requires to have two parking spaces, but they have five. They plan to operate with 24-hour operations with camera surveillance, and this is the visual from the street, um, to the far right at the bottom. So, a very important note to make is that call enforcement, um, at the time when this staff call was first ran, there were no violations. However, um, since the planning commission meeting, there has been a violation. Um, they have more children than they were supposed to have, and so, they have been cited for that. Um, there's 39 total public calls that were made over the last year for public safety with regards to EMS and 911. As you're seeing, there were seven EMS calls made by the home, there were 26 calls made 911 by the home, and then six other calls that were outside of the home were 911. Uh, therefore, staff is recommending denial as well as the planning commission recommended denial. The applicant is not shown with the present, sorry.
Not sure. The applicant not here?
Not shown with the present.
Okay, is any, uh, one here to speak against this? I'll open the hearing first. Anyone who's to be against this or have say, if you're opposed, if you're against.
Yeah.
Come over here. On the side.
Everybody, everybody in this house, everybody.
So, y'all know we could save y'all a lot of trouble. We got 10 minutes, guess who's last of all, who's going first?
Carrie.
Oh, come on, you gotta first go first.
Good evening. My name is Gwen Cox. I live on Old Fairland Road. Uh, one evening in June, as I was working in my dead rose bush, uh, garden, a young man approached me from the street and wanted to know if he could use my phone, and without looking at him, I said, "No." And he started crying, big guy. He started crying, and then I looked up, and, uh, I said, "What's wrong?" He says, "I'm in that group home at 3910." He says, "And they're trying to kill me." And his shirt had blood all over it. And so, of course, the mother instinct went out in me at that time, and I said, "I'll call the police for you." He wanted to call the police. So, I called the police, and I let him talk to them, and, um, and they were supposed to come. I told him not to go back to the house, but to stand at that long driveway at the street until the police came. Anyway, I am opposed to this home because I feel like if they can't handle the five that they have without somebody getting hurt, I don't believe they could handle more than that. So, that's my position, and I think that is the position of all of us on Old Fairland. And every, there are other people up here who have had, um, experiences with this home that are not good. I wanna see if Ms. Annette Joseph is here, Angela Joseph? Anyway, she is a neighbor of mine, uh, and she called me and told me that one night at about two, I forget the time, two to three o'clock in the morning, um, they were in bed, but so, um, her son was home from college or from somewhere, and he happened to be up and saw this guy approaching their deck in the backyard. So, the guy got the gun and told, excuse me, told his mother not to come out of her room. And so, when he ran outside, he told the guy, "Get out of his yard," and the guy ran back to that house. So, and that was reported to the police as well. And several other people have had, um, not good experiences. I think we got it. Thank you.
Y'all think we gotta let throw the public hearing? You don't, you don't have to add. I'm gonna throw the public hearing.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to, um, the non，请 request for U-118-0-02.
Second.
Property move is second. In further discussion, probably go on.
Thank you for all your emails. Yeah, thank you for all your emails and concerns. I did do a site visit on, um, the street this weekend, um, to see exactly where the house was located in our community, District Three community, um, and I know there was some confusion about where this, um, house is on that, on the right side. If you're coming from, uh, Camp Creek, the left side of the street is District Three. If you're on the right side of the street, it's District Two. Once you get to back and roll, all of it is District Three. Okay? Thank you.
So, and, and yeah, with the confusion, uh, I know a lot of you all reached out. I do wanna thank, um, Ms. Cox and also my friend, uh, Richard back there, for actually leading the charge, and it's good to see you all out there. This is not what we want, um, in our community. I'm not saying that these type of businesses, they should not be there, but I do believe that if they can't handle plastic, then they should not afraid to find what we got going on as neighbors. So, I do thank you all for coming together. It's great to see the room packed, and this is how we get things done. So, keep it up. Make sure you reach out to your council people, of course, on the other side of District Two, and on the other side of District Two, we'll all, we'll see you, okay?
Well, I bet y'all how this one will go. Who called it anyway? All of those in favor? And we're back to have recommendation, right?
Yeah.
Okay. That passes U-Deb.
I'll see y'all at the public visiting.
That's a very good point. So, Mayor and Council, this is your last zoning item, here's your first one, I, well, not tonight, today, I'm sorry. Um, that's Z-18-0-08 for Ella Road to Ella Lane direction. So, this, really excited, um, that we are having our, uh, second and third hotel, um, presentation to you all. So, we're really excited that we're, um, having our second and third hotel presentation to you all. Um, the applicant, which is Fairland House Specialty LLC, is requesting to rezon the property from mixed with conditions to C-1. This property is located in Council District Seven. The planning commission recommended approval of this property. As you're seeing in the two property, with the two photos below, you're seeing I-85 is immediately adjacent to this property, shown by the arrow, and then the new construction will be shown where the site is arrowing now. Um, you're seeing the existing hotel, um, that's there now, looking to accompany by these other two pieces. Uh, this piece came before you last month with townhomes. Just to kind of give you an idea where this property will be located. So, there will be two hotels, um, as I believe you see the name of the hotels on your site plan. Uh, there will be two hotels, both will be four stories each. Um, you're seeing there are 59,000 square feet on one and 56 on the other, 96 rooms on one and 92 on the other, 101 parking spaces on one and 105 on the other. So, basically, the first number you're seeing will be the first, um, property at the top, and then the second number you're seeing will be the second at the bottom. So, it's very important to know, there's plenty of information to know, but the one most important thing to note is that, um, this property will not be, um, there will not be any connectivity over to the townhomes, which means that basically the townhome will not be, um, I guess having access to this hotel, or there will be hotel quality issues to the property, um, of residential. And then the comprehensive plan doesn't have the use that we're, um, seeing for this as far as currently, we're recommending amendment to the future land use map because currently it has suburban two, but we're recommending an amendment to see if we can really work. So, with that being said, staff recommends approval of the land use amendment from suburban two neighborhoods, the community that work with a condition. That condition will be the, um, develop plus abide by the site plan, um, that's, um, dated for June 21st, 2018, sorry. And that's pretty much standard, the regulations that have those matters in question.
The applicant here?
She is.
Album, you want to come up?
Hi, Ash. My name's Sarah Dean. I work for the company. Um, unfortunately, the architects like to know our intent today, so I'm here representing them. But, um, I can answer any questions that you have. I'm familiar with the project. We've met with the residents, and I think their only concern was a bit of a confusion with another, um, land development happening in Renaissance, um, so they were confused about their property values, but we assured them that, um, we're keeping to the setbacks and the buffer zone, um, and that we were not connecting their residential neighborhood to Ella Lane, and that was really the biggest concern.
All right. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody for a question?
Michael Donald, District Six. Uh, I'm here to recommend opposition to the comprehensive land use change. This is not only an problem, it borders on being unethical. How a private individual can initiate a zoning request and then have the whole government go back and change the comprehensive land use plan to do something? That was the major aspect that this government had of the five things that we concentrated on. If somebody's gonna deal with the land use plan, need to wait, let their consultant do it, so the consultant does everything at the same time. This community has seen major zoning cases to where they come up and say, "Hey, we don't like this. No one initiates change in the land use plan then, so it shouldn't be done now." You're going down a rabbit hole that is just wrong. If something needs to done, this should have been administratively deferred. This is a problem, and you're making it a problem by even considering this. There's a process in place. There's a process in place, we need to follow the process.
Any more for again? Seeing none, I'm a road to public hearing. If you come in.
So, let me first take mention to you, anytime there's a zoning change, if you're gonna recommend the approval of the zoning, you must also make sure that the comprehensive plan is saying that this use will be the same for the next twenty years as well. So, there's no need for you to make a recommendation for a zoning change if it's not gonna be applicable for the next twenty years. So, that's what our recommendations would be made, is very standard in every government using that. So, it's not uncommon.
Any questions, Ben?
Thank you very much. Go ahead. I don't know, I have a comment. I might just want to say I agree with my constituents, District Six, District Seven. I don't think the suburban two classification has been a problem that many of my constituents have complained about. We actually just talked about it on our economic development tour. And it is a little problematic that we haven't been able to get that changed, but a business that's coming to build a hotel, we get a change. I understand, I mean, that's a hotel, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hope for it, but we need to, we do need to get back to looking at that comprehensive land use plan.
So, sorry, I may make a comment to that. The staff did not, excuse me, the applicant did not make that report, is that a staff's best management practice of the comprehensive plan map? We are making that recommendation, the applicant did not ask for that. Of course, we're looking at what the zoning allows for in the next twenty years, based on the comprehensive plan. And if you were to approve this rezoning, it's not allowed to be done in the next twenty years. Of course, that was something that, again, as I mentioned, if the government practices that.
So, I hear that, I'm just saying, it does look like the change to our comprehensive plan is being made, no matter who asks for it, but a change is being made for a corporation when constituents have been asking for changes too. And I just want to make sure that the next time constituents come and say, "We need something changed," like I want us to be as responsive to our constituents as we are the corporation.
Right. And if I can make one last statement, I'm sorry. When it comes to the comprehensive plan, you're gonna find that, of course, every zoning request is going to have, either we're saying it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan or it's not. So, when you had us come before, we said it's in compliance. This is the first time we've seen where it has not been. So, it has not been the applicant making this request, it's the staff ensuring that our comprehensive plan is following your actions. That's all.
All right. Let's talk about the Fairfield Inn that's there now, that's a listed hotel. And I don't know when they got the permit and when they completed, but was it zone serving suburban two? When they required for their permit and did they have to get a change?
I believe they were already right off zone, so they didn't have to come before the change, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not sure, I'm sorry, when the fires, I'm not certain of that, but I can find out in the bank information back to you for sure.
So, 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 so that little section was zoned differently than the section next to it?
No, I do know that this staff had no part as far as the zoning side of it, so I have to research that, see how it was done in the past government, and then I have to get that back to you, because I'm not certain at this time. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, I entertain motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve I.D. eighteen as zero zero eight.
First down, recommendation.
And I also like to say, Mr. Mayor, the people in District Seven, they're aware of this project, I've been in communication with many individuals, especially the people that are neighboring that area, and they look forward to corporate citizens and partnership and community. It's also refreshing as someone who's lived there for fourteen years plus to see former students employed by this corporation and the partnership and expectation moving forward in the future and willingness to work with our community. So, I believe this will be an asset, albeit I do understand the concern.
Good. Any further discussion? Now, let's go. That passes unanimously.
Next item is a resolution establishing the twenty-nineteen City of South Fulton Football Jamboree and for other lawful purposes that sponsor by Councilmember Willis, Resolution two thousand eighteen at zero fifty-five.
Yes, I asked that Mr. Tony Willis approach, so he can respond on this, but basically what this resolution is doing is giving an action to the parks director to come back to bring forth a plan to the council for a youth football jamboree beginning in the year twenty-nineteen. And the hope of this jamboree will be to, number one, showcase the excellent talent we have in our youth football program throughout the city of South Fulton. It will also, hopefully, if he can give the school system to partner, give us an opportunity to take the program to one of our city high school stadiums to utilize. It also will give us an opportunity, if done right, and I'm planning to work closely with our parks director on this, to generate some revenue that will assist with kids who can't afford to play, who wanna play, and also may generate a revenue force to put back into our parks and recreation facilities. I have seen this done throughout the metro Atlanta area and other counties. We have never done it in the city of South Fulton. I know that it can be done in the city of South Fulton. And so, I ask my colleagues to support this. And if it's okay, Mayor, can you please ask, let Mr. Phillips talk about this a little bit?
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor and Councilmembers. Councilwoman Willis, thank you for the opportunity to speak for this resolution. I think this is an excellent idea. Myself and the staff are really excited about the opportunity to take on this project. You get a lot of the major points in your introduction to the resolution, so I won't belabor the point. I can tell you that I think in addition to the wonderful opportunity that this presents, it also opens up a dialogue with some of the stakeholders in the school system that I am hopeful can lead to even more partnerships in the future. I think there's a lot of opportunity there and this could very well be a springboard to do that. It is a revenue generating opportunity. It can help children who otherwise might not be able to play football. It also creates a community event that I think we can all rally around. So, I'm very much in support of it. We think it's an excellent idea and I'm excited about taking it on.
I move that we approve Resolution twenty-eighteen zero five five, Resolution for twenty-nineteen South Fulton Football Jamboree.
Second. I'll be moving second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Thank you, Congress.
Sir? This one, Senator?
The next item for discussion is the resolution on expected standards of communication and for other lawful purposes. This is sponsored by Councilwoman Willis and Councilwoman Dunn. It's Resolution Number two zero one, that's three ones.
Correct, Senator.
I think for the council, we have really been, I wouldn't necessarily say, well, maybe I should, let me just be as transparent as possible. We strive, we struggle for information and we want to make sure that we are getting the proper information, the proper due time, so we can intelligently report back to our residents. That is what we've been charged to do, we're in these seats, we want to ensure that we have all the information to properly assess all situations. So, I think with this communication ordinance, I think it's, well, resolution, I think is important for us, whether city officials or elected, I think that we need to be able to be communicating and then be transparent through our outstanding communication. So, I think this is one of the issues that we had as an entire council and hopefully this can alleviate some problems. And I know that with Councilwoman Willis, she wanted to share some information.
Councilwoman Willis?
Well, she covered it off. Basically, this is just an effort to, and I'll use who Councilwoman Gilliard, this is just an effort to help improve communication and make sure that we are aware of city that's in a timely manner, we get those vibes, so that we can notify our residents, so that we can make, do our best effort to make sure that we're there. And we partnered over whether or not we wanted to move on with this, but I think that is good to establish some type of guideline. I know there are gonna be some extenuating circumstances and there's gonna be an exception to every rule, but I think this is a start for us to establish some guidelines on how we should be communicated to as your elected body. And I yield to Ms. Gilliard.
Thank you. I would like to ask if you, the two of you are open to a friendly amendment? And so, what I would like to propose, since, can you hear me now? Okay. I'm talking about a friendly amendment, because there are two things that I think should be added to it. And one of them, and I have written ordinance about this, and rather than have, being, you know, additional ordinance, if this one could include council having the ability to speak at city sponsored events, we should definitely be able to do that. And we should also be able, we should also be notified when the city is having an event that's planned in our district. So, I would like to add those two things to this resolution. It's okay with you?
I think that's good.
The resolution. Well, thank you.
You get that, Senator?
All right, thank you.
This is, this is more of a question. Can you clarify for me under the purposes of this resolution, city sponsored event shall not include, I'm particularly interested in clause two B, page eighty-two? So, my understanding, so you're saying it is not a sponsored event? It should not include city employees being paid during work hours in plan? Okay, I think I'm clear. So, this is, so basically, if it's a city council sponsored event, we should not solicit anybody other than our aides, right? Is that what this was attempting to do, the work? I'm not clear. Uh, attorney, can you specify the intent, the legal intent here?
So, Mayor, Council, essentially, this is clarifying, so the top portion clarifies what is a city sponsored event?
Right.
And the subsection that you were referencing says that it shall not be a city sponsored event if it's a community or volunteer event that's hosted either by a mayor or less than four council members, as long as you don't tell the public that this is a city event. Like, you're clear to the public that this is my town hall or this is, you know, something we're doing for X, Y, Z. And also, as long as you don't use city employees during your paid work hours to facilitate it.
I said we need to remove that, because if we have town halls, we're gonna use our paid staff, doesn't it? So, I think that, I'm just saying your intent, but to say that we can't use paid staff doing those events, because for example, if we have a town hall, I mean, we're gonna use our staff at those town halls.
Well, there is an exception here that says that it excludes the mayor's assistant or council aides. So, you can use them, or I can, I can strike.
Yeah, I can strike it. I think you should strike that later.
I think that would probably be helpful as well, but I think your intent was pretty much, I guess, in campaign, because we kind of went through this before in another county that I was in, whether or not, if they're camp, if they're working after hours and they're not doing a city event, then it could be, I guess, perceived as a campaign or something that need to be using city employees. Is that where?
That's correct, because if it's not city facilitated, then you don't necessarily want to, one, I mean, if they're coming to your event and they're working, they should be paid. And if they're not being paid, it should be voluntary. And then you can't have them come voluntarily during their work hours because they owe that time to the city. So, this, this provision was put in there to make sure that if you have an event, it's not city sponsored, that you don't solicit employees during their work hours.
Not city sponsored.
Yeah, if it's not city sponsored, if it's not city sponsored, then the intent here was that you don't solicit employees to get involved, to have them during their work hours.
But I raised that because it specifically says, which is why I was unclear, this means that it has to be sponsored by at least four council members. And that's where I was like.
Yeah, that's, or that's, or that's, or. Well, I tell you this, you really don't have a clear process in place for when an event is city sponsored. So, you're gonna have some fuzziness there, like you don't have any legislation that says this is a city sponsored event. What does city sponsored event mean? Does it mean that, you know, my understanding of city sponsored event is the legal definition, and that means it's an event the city says can happen, you know? But to have that happen, then you have to have a form where you say that it's going to happen. But you really don't have anything in place kind of outlining what is a city sponsored event. This resolution does not accomplish that person, that purpose. This resolution is strictly for the purpose of saying below where it says city sponsored events, that you need to be notified if there's a city sponsored event, but it doesn't say what constitutes a city sponsored event.
That's piece of legislation.
But, but it does. Right above it it says the definition of a city sponsored event is a one, two, and three, which is why I was confused about this subsection. So, while it may not be comprehensive, we have made an attempt to define a city sponsored
Well, see, so this resolution defines what it is, but it doesn't say when it's going to constitute a city sponsored event. So, like, for example, it says this, city sponsored event occurs when the public is invited to attend, two percent, city employees are used, is publicized to the, to the public as being a city event. But you don't have anything that says when you can actually do that. So, this says that when that happens, we're gonna classify it as a city sponsored event. But you don't have any legislation in place that says who can make that determination? Like, who, who is able to make that determination? And my recommendation would be to say that, you know, it's the decision of the mayor or council, or you can either delegate that determination to someone, but just to have something where, where you address that. This resolution does not address that. This, this resolution does not put in place policy that says who determines what is a city sponsored event.
I guess I just don't want us to be limited. Like, if we decide to have a town hall meeting, I just don't want us to be restricted from including employees, because that's the purpose of having a town hall meeting. Most of us, most of us, free employees and staff to participate in our town hall meetings. I don't want us to be restricted, assuming that.
I think it's right, Florida, Ms. Gilliard.
Um, I, I love the idea of this resolution. I do think that it is trying to do too many things at one time. We had a, we had a resolution I've been waiting for, and then for two meetings now, where we were going to talk about the process of naming something a city sponsored event. So, I think that, that that should be a separate resolution. We need to figure out that process, but once we have decided that it is a city sponsored event, I think the communications things that are outlined here are good. So, I mean, without, like, so for example, line forty-eight where we say that the city sponsored event shall be city employees during work hours. So, I have an electoral college on Saturday, that's not a city sponsored event because they're not doing work hours. That doesn't mean that they can't work, they can, if they can come and work, it's not during their work hours. So, that's, there's, there's a great area. Most of our, most of our town halls or city events happen outside of nine to five or eight to five work hours. So, I'm not sure that this really addresses any of those things. My, my next question was around lines eighty-one to eighty-three, where it says that notice is advised in the public of the city sponsored event will be mailed. I'm confused, Mr. clerk, does that mean that once we've decided that something is a city sponsored event? Mr. Clerk, does that mean that once we've decided that something is a city sponsored event or if something reaches that definition under this resolution, that we will automatically do a public notice and we no longer have to poll for public notices the way that we have had to in the past?
So we can have some more about what constitutes a meeting of the city council. So either the mayor can call it or four council members can call it. So there's, so, so there's, so I just, to be clear, there's nothing in this ordinance that, that triggers a public notice? People still have to do that poll to provide public notice if we were having an event? So for example, this jamboree that we just passed, this annual, we still need to go out, we still need to email a, uh, a polling form and get four people to agree to that polling form before we send out a public notice saying that that event is happening?
Well, there is a difference between city sponsored events and public meetings. So if you're going to treat a city sponsored event, because if it were a public meeting, then I would be the public meeting requirements. The football jamboree, it doesn't sound like from the setup that it's getting treated. Yeah, it's going to be more of like a social community, everyone, you know, it's, it's all watching football. Um, you might have a members of councils speaking to the public. Uh, but it is not going to be set up as if it were a meeting.
So if we had a district forum or a electoral college and more than a quorum of council people were there, are we required to have public notice for that?
If more of a quorum, if you were there and you're wanting to be specifically addressing city policy, then you would need to notice that if, if, as if it were a public meeting.
But that is not necessarily, I'm sorry, that is not necessarily a city sponsored event.
Correct. That would be strictly because it, it needs the definition of a public meeting.
Listen, ma'am, I would like to ask you a question.
Second.
I'd like to go with second, the previous question. In discussion, although the favor... On the previous question?
I have a comment on the previous question. Would you...
We're discussing, we're discussing on the previous question.
I am curious about, um, line ninety-six, three, one, oh, two, the city development proposal. I understand the intent, but I think it, it makes sense if you're, um, relegating that to the city council because some developments have all kind of conditions about confidentiality. And so how, how do you deal with that?
Let me, let me just say this, Mr. Brown. I take motion to previous question in debate.
I resent...
Yeah.
I resent the...
Your motion, yes.
I resent the motion. And then I have a comment on... Well, I'm asking you to put me down to speak then.
Okay, but I'm saying if you're sending your motion for previous question.
I resent my motion and then I'm asking you to put me down to speak then.
Uh, that, that means that, that would be Mr. Gilliard. But I, I interrupt.
I just was just getting clarity. I understand that the council would want to know about particular, um, proposals in their district if this comes to the city, but sometimes their, uh, kind of confidentiality provisions around that. How do you deal with that? And I don't know that...
No, I said...
One, it is not qualified at across the council, the entire council, you know, so it's not, it's not stated right. For all of the developments, it is within the, within the city council that they have a business they have a city manager's receipt. It does restrict it to just the city council person. And, and that's my point.
Maybe kind of turn, if you want to say something about that.
So the intent of this document is if the city manager gets a information about a development proposal, that he give it to the entire council. If you want to make it less than the entire council, that's your discretion.
Uh, Mr. Gilliard. Now that, you know, we've had all this discussion about it, um, it is very great. And I think we sort of have an apple and an orange. And I don't think that we're going to be able to get what we want in the individual pieces. I think that there's, that there's the intent for different types of communication. So I think that if it starts there, then the second part of it is that until we define what a city event is or isn't, we're going to keep going, you know, around in this circle of, you know, what are we doing? Because if, if it's a city sponsored event, does that mean that staff is going to come out in the evenings? If we're having a, um, town hall meeting, for instance, in our district, and we're asking the staff to come out and make a presentation, which is after, um, working hours, is that a city event? Or is the city event one that we have received notification about that the city is going to have a meeting about ABC a little? So, um, I think until we make that clear, then the two items that I offer as a friendly amendment, um, might need to be held until we can get some clarity on what is an event and what isn't an event. So that we don't keep bumping heads and having problems.
Are you going to keep bumping heads? Okay, Mr. Kallid and Ms. Gardens.
So, I do, I do just want to say I want to revisit this issue around public notice, um, which this does not address. First of all, I just, I do think that this probably just needs a little bit more, um, work and fleshing out. Uh, but district meetings, right, or city, or town halls, we discuss city business. And at community events that are like economic development conferences or whatever, we, we discuss, we're discussing city policy. And so I know that I always invite all of my colleagues out whenever I'm doing an event like that. And it's been a problem for them to all be in the same room. And I really would like for us to fix that. I really would like for us to, I really would like for it to be easier that when one of us is doing an event, that all of us can come. And it doesn't, it doesn't have to be a production. Uh, I, I did watch the entire work session, um, at my new job and on my way here today. And I did see that, uh, Mr. Donald, when you pulled the legislative process, uh, piece of the work session. I had been proposing a legislative process that was like a baseball field. Where first base was, um, first, this is, this is your main, where first, where first base is your main. First base was department overview. And so one of the things that happens is that we write resolutions and ordinances that are very difficult for our staff to actually execute. And so I'm just wondering if all of the departments have reviewed this to say this looks good in theory, but like how, how does it work in, in reality? So in addition to a, a financial impact statement and a review by you, this is exactly the kind of legislation that our departments need to weigh in on to see how, how we got to deal with that, right?
So, um, I, I think we are getting lost in the weeds. I think this was more of an attempt to foster more transparent communication. You know, simply where a resolution is written, if you don't like it, you can amend. But if you want to create more federal legislation, you can override that. You can, you know, bring something next council meeting. So this simply is to put a process where it's simple to put a process in place for transparent communication. It's not for anybody in the railroad or doing anything else. We, we wanted to be right. There's still going to be opportunities to bring something forth that is valid. But this will put something in place that we know after tomorrow, this will be where we at least have a footprint of how we should communicate. So I, I, I think we're just getting lost in the weeds where we're talking about who's going to be in an event and this, that, and the third. Our council aides and staff, this is a part-time job. So essentially, their hours are not from nine to five. You know, we are flexible in their hours. So if there is a city event on a Saturday, that's not going to stop them from working that city event. But they're giving additional time to, you know, this on a weekday. So I, I just think we're getting lost in what we're really attempting to do here. So that's just my, my intent. Um, I think we need something in place and then we can tweak it as we want.
I got, I got, got one, beat for one minute. And, uh, she's a... And, uh, one of the things that we kept to, and look at y'all, that somebody's eight, maybe five, maybe five times, maybe four times, based on what you selected there. So that's going to help it get back. Ms. Buzz Freeman. Come here, ma'am. And just going to get back to what you just said. And I was very glad that you said it because I'm going to bring it up. Have you looked at this ordinance and this is very important as a user department?
I don't know, I looked at it, of course, I'm sorry, no.
Okay, now, let me get back to what Mr. Kallid said. And then what I, my competition I had was not only the city manager, but other staff. We found ourselves entering this kind of conversation because we do not they use a department event what we do.
That's what you just said. That's not true.
Well, you might be called out now.
No, I'm not called out.
Now, I'm just saying, I put it out there, and I said we need to have a sheet. And we put in these things, like we didn't come, and each department, even the department within the, within the building, and some departments outside, for example, like health department and people like that, that they will look at these things and they will sign off on. Because even as intelligent as we are, we, uh, we may miss something because we're not professionals in that area. So it's very important that if you tell me you not have an opportunity, even though it may be sent to you now, and even though it may be sent to you, that you have an opportunity to vet this information gives me a little heartburn. And I just think that, and I understand, Mr. Donald, that we, we are going to propose something to that nature in the future. Is that right?
Correct. We, the meeting got moved up by the day, and there was a lot of work that had to go into it, which is why the legislative process, we had to get these other more pertinent and urgent items on the work session. And so because of that, we had to pull the legislative, uh, process because it just wasn't complete yet. So we'll have it on the next.
So, and it's not just only this ordinance, I'm just talking to Jim, Jim, to, because any ordinance, I think you may have a process to say that you get, you get an ordinance then by a certain time to the, to use the department. And then their responsibility, no, it's just the user's, user department's responsibility to respond in time. And maybe the fact that you come and say, I haven't had a time, then it may not be the right thing to say. But the reality of that's what's happened. And I'm just saying, I would like to see where you're going with that, so that we can have a, a responsible, uh, user department to have responsible vetting of, of the resolution.
Understood.
Okay, Ms. Wilson, go ahead.
I sent the ordinance, uh, this resolution out personally. Chief Bu, I mean, not Chief Bu, Chief Meadows responded. He responded, and he responded weeks ago. And he said, what is the intent? And I had a conversation and I told him the intent. And he said, okay, I can work with that. It's not our fault that staff may not read the ordinance in a timely manner and provide feedback, but to see here and accuse of us not, of not communicating with staff, that's not right, Mr. Mayor. I personally, I do my due diligence as a policymaker. I do my due diligence as a policymaker for everything that I legislate. And I make sure I talk with, I make sure I talk with staff that is going to be impacted with my legislation. Mrs. Freeman will tell you, I've been talking to her about this legislation for months.
The question was if I had the opportunity to vet the information.
Okay, but it was...
And based on...
Yeah, it's a whole issue. I'm not saying you didn't, you didn't like to do anything. I'm just trying to stretch for a process here, we can, we're talking about communication, right? So we can get more communication back. I'm not...
So maybe...
No, not yet. So that's all I'm trying to say. It's nothing, it's nothing derogatory like this. I'm just saying communication is two ways. And we're not doing stuff, even on her side, Kelly. If she's not doing, if she's not doing it, then that's another issue. So that's all I'm saying. All right, you can just go on.
So, um, I do concur with Ms. Willis. And she did send it out. I was on the email, so I did see staff responding. Um, my concern is, well, who's setting the agenda? Is it City Manager or is it the mayor? Because I'm going to have things that I've been waiting on the agenda that hasn't been vetted by the staff, fiscal impact, impact statement. So I'm just trying to figure out how, what's the process? How did this get on there? You know, if you're setting the agenda there, now you're saying, oh, well, it wasn't properly vetted.
So... You're not hearing what I'm saying.
What, well, clearly...
I'm trying to clear it up, aren't you?
Clear it up.
I'm not trying to cause controversy. I'm just saying, and I've had, and hell, and I've said this before, months ago, about having a, 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 a sheet that shows the proper vetting from every user department. Now...
Even without that sheet here, I make sure I talk with staff.
I'm not saying you didn't. I'm not saying you didn't. Okay?
But who sets the agenda?
The mayor sets the agenda, I think we're clear on that. The key thing that we probably need to argue on here, we got a lot of priorities. And so the key thing is setting priorities. And so while Mr. Meadows made a, who you called out for being able to read the ordinance and et cetera, et cetera, and respond, I probably say that Ms. Freeman, who was a two-person team who had about ten events over the last three weeks, as well as some good news and bad news that has come through the city and has to respond to that. I think if she didn't have time, well, we could have done better to respond and said, hey, we didn't, I haven't had time to vet this while others have. Our, our process that we will be bringing forward should clear all of these things up. But I would encourage us not to, we shouldn't point the finger at any single person as far as responsiveness on this item. We've got a lot of priority legislation that we have to look at. And we have a lot of ordinances. I think today, you guys are at least the clerk and mayor who the, uh, FIS, uh, give, uh, sent back to, there are about seven of them that I saw come through today because there's seven pieces of legislation that have been in the pipeline. So it's not picking on one ordinance over the other. There's a lot of legislation that is floating around behind the scenes, which you guys know, and just one week ago, we talked about not having FIS complete. The same people who do the FIS, which is your financial folks, also have to partner with the other staff members to get insight. So I'm not certain about that whole piece that we're navigating and while we're pointing to this one item. But I say we're all kind of working together to get to that point so that we have our process together, which has not been in place.
I have continuously said, I spoke with Ms. Freeman. Because she did not respond via email, that's the meaning that she didn't respond. She has been speaking with me about this legislation continuously. So to, what I'm saying is, the question was brought up by Mr. Kallid that did staff weigh in? Then, then, then the mayor came back and said, why are we not talking to staff about this legislation? I have spoken with this, with Chief, with Chief Meadows and, and Jolene about this continuously. Because this communication is around what they do. It's about not being notified tim- timely about public safety issues. It's about not being notified timely about community events. And so that's where, that is the catalyst, that is the reason, that's the origin of this communication order.
Understood. Again, that does not change the perspective or the response at all. I think still the piece that we're looking at here is, for this piece of legislation, while y'all have had conversations about the process multiple times, great conversations, you've included me in on many of them. I think the question was just, did she have time to vet the actual resolution and respond to it? I think Ms. Freeman has said that she didn't have enough time to do that. And there, there may be some improvements that she might want to provide. I think your colleagues have looked at it and seen that there are multiple things that tie into other, uh, potential ordinances. It's not a, I don't think it's an issue or a fight with anybody other than it points out that this legislative process, we need to clean it up a little bit. And part of that is a staff's responsibility, and we take that on.
Mr. Mayor? I'm the only person that has a statement. I, um, clearly, there's, there's a need for this, as we can see. We've been discussing it this long. Uh, I think that... Uh, I think that it would be a good idea, however, Mr. Mayor, we get back into your idea of sending us those emails when things aren't gonna be on the agenda. Uh, I thought that was an excellent idea. I don't know if time has gotten in the way of it, but it's kind of slowed down. Because when we have things and we're anticipating come on, it's just a gray area when they're not. Uh, but during those times that they're not, we can probably put forth more effort to interface with staff to make sure that they, uh, evenly digest the legislation we're proposing.
I'll talk to a few questions.
Second. I don't think you have a name on this issue.
She withdrew, she withdrew.
That was a pop here, but I don't think there was a name. It's just open for you all to.
Okay, question.
The motion is to approve the resolution, twenty eighteen, zero five six, with a notice made by Councilwoman Deal Yar.
Probably move the second in the first discussion. All those in favor? That's, uh, five to two.
Thank you, my colleagues, for this support. The next resolution is a resolution ensuring parity of pay and for other lawful purposes. That's sponsored by Councilmember Clee. Resolution two thousand eighteen, that's zero fifty seven. Uh, this is the resolution that you've been talking about for quite some time. I think we think that we need to make a decision about it because our fiscal year starts in seven days. And, um, I believe that some of our legislative specialists are awaiting word on when they are gonna be reselling the time. So I make a motion to please accept the resolution.
Second.
Probably move the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
The next item is a ordinance for second reading, sponsored by Councilmember Willis, ordinance two thousand eighteen, that's zero thirty nine, and ordinance amending the City of South Fulton Hotel and Motel taxation ordinance and for other lawful purposes.
I believe that we approved ordinance twenty eighteen, zero thirty nine.
Second. Probably move the second. Any discussion? Just, uh, that's right.
Um, just clarification, is it just that one section that's amended? Cause it's not just.
Ordinance of getting the hotel motel taxation ordinance, what this ordinance is doing is bringing us into compliance of, uh, collecting a hotel, hotel five percent versus what we're currently collecting seven percent. That's all this ordinance is doing. Currently, we're collecting at a rate of seven percent, and we should not be, so this brings us into compliance of collecting at five percent.
Will you probably move the second? How do you vote? That passes unanimously.
Next ordinance is for first reading, sponsored by Councilmember Ral, ordinance two thousand eighteen, that's zero forty, and ordinance to establish telecommunications standards and for other lawful purposes.
This particular ordinance, um, I wanted to turn to our attorney to talk about it. It uses, uh, sometimes it uses telecommunications and significantly updates the telecommunications ordinance and standards that were in place under Fulton County. Um, I want to thank the staff and the legal team. He spent quite a bit of time, and I think he has a strong telecommunications ordinance, so he's gotta just highlight a couple things.
Thank you, Ms. Ral. Um, my name is Lenny Felgen. I'm sort of the city attorney's office. Um, this basically is, um, the Fulton County ordinance that I took, uh, changed dramatically. A lot of provisions they had were outdated. Basically, this is the regulation on cellular telecommunications, antennas and structures, uh, in the city, uh, based on the requirements of the nineteen ninety-six Communications Act and what the feds and state have done since then to streamline the requirements and in many respects take away some of the power of the cities and, uh, put in a lot of the timeline requirements. So what we have here is very different procedures. Um, what the state that does require is, is three different ways to locate antennas. Either to collocate them on an existing pole and don't change much, just put a new antenna on there, or to collocate on an existing pole and do some substantial changes to it, or build a whole structure. Those three things require completely three different timelines and three different allowances for the kind of review that the, that the city can do. Uh, general colocation, you got sixty days, and you don't have a whole lot of legal. Um, substantial change colocation, you have about ninety days, even a slight delay based on the exact standards that are set up in the FCC rules and the state code. And the last one allows you for a much more relieved way than in negotiating and, and requirements and structure, construction, location, and things like that is, allows for a hundred and fifty day assessment to place new structures, and not now those for private property and right of way. So what this ordinance does comprehensively is it puts in the requirements that telecommunication companies have to apply the, to the city. They're comprehensive applications, so that they can provide us with enough information for the city to make the appropriate decisions, um, based on the information they provide. And sometimes it may require the city to need additional expertise, which is also provided for that in the ordinance, because most staff members and adults as well aren't well versed in engineering or radio frequencies. I'm not either in three of these. So when we review these applications, a lot of the times it requires additional assistance, and it will require additional assistance to make sure that the decisions y'all are making are reasonably based. So this is a very comprehensive ordinance, and, uh, I can take any questions y'all have. I'll sit here for however long you want, uh, to answer whatever questions you want, as best I can. Um, it's a complicated ordinance that, uh, has been worked out amongst different jurisdictions. I've drafted this or, this type of ordinance for several jurisdictions before. Um, it's been, uh, tested, and it's, you know, it's been well approved. So, okay, I, um, because there are some zoning aspects to this, in terms of where, where certain structures can be located, we're putting this through the Full Zoning Procedures Act so that we don't have any issues. So it's going in the planning commission. Using this as the first read, the two second read won't be included. It goes through the planning commission, and then public keying. So I'll take any questions if I, I recommend it. Goodness, and then please.
Um, so do we have a, a issue with our communications standard?
The Fulton County ordinance that we have currently adopted as part of our, um, wholesome adoption of the code is outdated in many, many respects, and including the timelines that are required by the law.
Wait. Okay, uh, Mr. Cabe and Ms. Ral, is there anything in this ordinance that prohibits us from later setting up, um, municipal wifi service?
No, in fact, it, it, it's, uh, towards the end of this ordinance, it provides for, uh, methodology of how y'all carry in police structures owned by the city for placement of antennas.
Awesome, thank you.
Now, I will caveat this. The FCC is currently in the process of putting in a rule that may cut us a little bit on the money. And a lot of cities may, uh, be appealing that rule and finding loss because what they'll do is they'll hamper our ability to charge more than a very minimal amount for those structured leases. So if that comes to pass and we're not able to win the challenge, we'll have to come back and redo the ordinance. Cause right now, you can lease it at a negotiated price, uh, if you want, say, a thousand dollars a structure a year. But what the FCC is proposing is gonna be much more hampered and then much more nominal fee, and it's, it's raised a lot higher, the municipal association and a lot of the cities throughout the country, and they're going to challenge that rule if it does get adopted in this coming week. But I will keep you posted as to what needs to revise this ordinance.
Congratulations on consequences. Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Ral.
Um, one thing I wanted, this really looks into using concealed means to hit, um, kind of conceal these towers so they blend in better. That's why, as you know, we kind of have a big bag going across our city. So it, it's a attempt to try to not only bring us up to date, but prepare us for years' comes up. That's just, um, something I wanted to point out.
All right, any further comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. The next, next item is a request approval of the Youth Athletic Association interim plan, twenty eighteen, youth football season. I'll accept the nominee, I mean, I'm waiting. I had to turn that. I definitely, I mean, that's all right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This request is pursuant to the work session presentation that was made at the September eleventh meeting. I believe a copy will be provided with, uh, today's agenda centers around the discussion on the items we discussed at that work session pursuant to an interim plan specific to this season only for registration, data, and the sessions. Um, we would do some detail in the previous work session, and this is seeking approval by the council to move forward pursuant to that presentation.
Any further?
Uh, Director Phillips, how will this be communicated to the Youth Athletic Association?
We will communicate this to them directly upon council approval. We've been having an ongoing dialogue, so they're very aware of all the issues that are playing here. We'll be communicating that by phone call and by email, and where possible, we're in the parks each Saturday now. We'll be speaking face to face with our key stakeholders.
So they've had an opportunity to move in and assist with these recommendations?
Yes, pursuant to the city manager's direction some time ago, this plan as presented is collaborative. So we met with all the, well, not all the representatives, representative of each association, to talk about how best to move forward for this specific season.
Any further discussion?
This only applies.
This only applies to football, for the T S U's, this football season, correct? Exact.
Okay.
Any further discussion? I'm not here to take more. I'm going to approve, though you got any association you want to add. They probably move the second in the first discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Request approval of an I G A for public works with the City of Peachtree Corners.
I, I can talk about this with the city manager's asking, or you can go to the next item and then. So this is essentially, um, it's what we discussed earlier about the public works and, um, using, utilizing, um, the I G A with Peachtree Corners to implement. And the city manager is requesting authorization to, um, for us to negotiate the interim agreement that is substantially similar to this form for those contract employees up to a certain amount. Now, believe he, he said five million, I don't, I don't know if he's winged bill or digital. Do you want to, I think she would know the exact amount.
Good evening again. Um, so for the I G A with Peachtree Corners, we're looking at about five million, or call it not to exceed five million dollars. Um, so hoping to definitely have a significant amount of cost savings by being able to contract those services out. Um, as you know, the budget, um, public works combined with general services was a budget of about nine million, and so by leveraging this contract services, we're hoping to give some cost savings.
Let's go, Ral. Um, I'm, yeah. I'm on the wrong page.
No.
No, no, you're not. I'm just first. I don't mind that. No, you're right. Thank you, anyone. You can just go your, let this go, and then this tax. I got some of the ding dong on me. So, um, I'm looking through the draft that's in, um, the document, and, um, and some of it supports, um, what we heard during the, the work session. The key thing that's missing out of it is how much it's all costs. There's nothing in here about it at all.
Again, that's just the draft, and so we'll be working with legal, but I don't think legal has really vetted the document either. Um, so we'll be definitely making sure that we firm on those terms, but city manager and I got together this morning. I was looking at the budget and thinking of a, a good not to exceed about, which would be the five million dollars.
So I don't know about my colleagues, but before I vote on something, I'd like to have all the information before we vote on it. So I, I don't like to propose anything great.
So we're asking you to approve the I G A with a not to exceed amount of five million.
But, but, but it does not say anything in here about the overhead, what to lay up, who said, I mean, it's, the details are missing, that's what I'm saying. And I think that, that, that most of us feel, and I'm not trying to speak for anybody, but it's just my thinking that in order of, for us to exercise our due diligence, we like to have information before we vote. And so I read through it very, very quickly, and it's a, a very big document. It says, who we're gonna do, what with, what they're gonna do, and, um, what the obligations are and the terms is what I'm thinking about.
Well, so those, those decisions have not been made yet, so what we're asking you to do is the budget related to, uh, public works, as we decided, we talked about earlier in the work session, is over, uh, nine million dollars. Those act, there's about five point nine million dollars allocated to public works related activities. We are looking at about five point five million dollars is what we're asking for to authorize us up to, um, that amount to enter into an I G A for the delivery of these services. And it would, our task orders are, uh, related or under the I G A directly with the vendor would define all those items, which we would also bring back to council. But just to be frank with you, at this time, we are in a very difficult position. I do not believe, as your, your city manager, I'm advising you, that I am not confident that if we bring on the model that we have used in the past, that it will be successful. And I will tell you that I do not believe that we can afford it. And so I'm asking you, as the person that, that makes the advertising to you, to allow us to move forward with this agreement. Now, the council makes those final decisions, and so you don't have to, but I think, you know, we have definitely researched and vetted this, uh, very strongly, and the cost, especially with the other activities that we have to take on, far exceed our abilities.
So let me, let me be clear. So are you saying that this document, that is a draft, that you want us to vote yes on the draft, and then you're going to go and develop a contract that you will write back to us to vote for?
Yes, so you will be authorizing us to enter into an I G A, but the task order is where the rubber meets the road. So you will authorize us to enter into agreement with Peachtree Corners and see, to, to negotiate the, absolutely, to negotiate up to the five point five million dollars, but then the actual task order with Jay Hilton, the definition, et cetera, et cetera, we would be bringing back. But it is the, the horse is the, the I G A, and then the cart is the actual task order. And so we're trying to get the horse so we can attach a cart to it.
Thank you.
So I have a question. I filed it after my whole process a few minutes ago. Um, so legal has. So legal has not had opportunity to vet.
So my, my understanding in talking to the city manager about this document is that the authorization today is to authorize us to negotiate, to work out the final form of this document with costs that don't exceed 5.5 million. So this document will not actually be the document that we approved. Iowa, that whatever we authorize, but I think the city manager just wants the ability, once we work it out administratively, to move forward with it up to that, that amount.
So what was the rationale behind Peachtree Corners? I mean, did we look at other cities, or at least the one that the process needs to get piggybacked on pretty fast? I'm just trying to figure out what's...
You kind of hit it there on the head, but not only because of being able to do it fast. I mean, they, there are other cities that also have these agreements. But they have the most flexibility in their agreement. Remember, when you piggyback to a certain extent, at least with terms and, and models, you are tied to who you partner with. Their model allows us to take on certain things that the council have expressed strong desires for. Ensuring that staff are being able to be taken on by the contractor, meaning those who will be transitioning from the county. Secondly, that we can incorporate those service delivery platforms and service level agreements, including housing our call center, which you know we planned to contract out anyway through this process. So the flexibility and diversity in their contracting model with a vendor that is in those other cities as well is the chief and primary benefit.
So there, so, so technically, we would have to go with their vendor, who is C H and Hill, correct?
Uh, it's right. And we keep saying C H and Hill, but they don't exist anymore. It's called Jacobs.
Jacobs, so we, if we do that, if we go into this I G A, we essentially are going to Jacobs will be providing our contract services for public works.
Yes, well, they have Jacobs, and then they have another vendor as well. So we would be able to pick between the two, you and Jacobs exclusively, gives us some options.
About changing our communication, is it C H and Hill?
Yeah, it's been changed to Jacobs. So it allows them to, uh, Jacobs name, they've been, what do you call it, taken home. But also remember, this is a draft, so it will look different once it's finalized. And all the I R's are dotted and T's are crossed. The key portion is it would, you're authorizing us to enter into an I G A with Peachtree Corners. And those detail allows us to use their vendor, and that's the task order, which is the second part. And so you're allowing us to enter into the I G A, and then the task order, et cetera, we bring back.
So five million, and that's not, that's a multi-year, or that's just...
Single year, yes.
And they're all on the other side of town, so...
Who's on the other? Peachtree Corners is on the other side of town.
So Jacobs is also on the north side of town.
Well, they provide services throughout the metro Atlanta region.
So where will, I guess, if we do theirs, will staff be housed at our city hall?
We need to decide that, yes.
And equipment and all that?
So the equipment, remember, we have issues in being able to purchase the equipment. And so whatever facility that we decide on to pick, whatever equipment, vehicles, anything, is done in our city. So while they may deliver the service, they do it. So when you contract, I would tell people, don't think of the vendor, you, they work for you. So it is us delivering the service, we're just doing it through contract. So we are ultimately responsible, and we're also the, the deciders on how the service delivery is done.
Okay, um, I just feel like something, but, um...
So let me get to the bottom of it.
No, I just, I just feel like we're, we're being rushed into, into this, and I'm just really concerned. I mean, this is a five million dollar contract, and yes, put it in, button in, and all of that stuff. But it just feels like there's not enough to just fill out for it. So I don't know when the communication came, you know, to you as far as, you know, deciding or electing to go into an I G A with Peachtree Corners. But I'm just reading about this on Friday. So I'm just saying the communication, and that's why we're kind of in this position. I know, that's just my personal thing. I just think in order for us to be intelligent policymakers and decision makers on behalf of these constituents, we need information and three days before saying that we want to enter into an I G A, five million dollars, I think, for Peachtree Corners.
So I think while the vendor, or the partner, the city partner is something that maybe new, the discussions about contracting and partnering with other cities is something that, one, we talked about during the last council meeting, during that work session, when we talked about the hybrid model, either work session or through my presentation. I think we've also alluded to that potential over at least the last three months. The, the piece that it is, Peachtree Corners may be, now that, we have been looking at all of the cities. And so that is the one that makes the most sense. So I think that is, um, that may be a new thing. The actual amount for the, for public works is also something that we have allocated and looked at through the budget book since we submitted it on August 1st. So I, I would, I mean, if you have some additional questions or specific questions, we would definitely do our best to answer them. While we think that the timing is extremely important, while we can look at the other model, or we can actually pursue the other model that we do it the same way that we have done every transition thus far, I just think, you know, I hope the information that we provide about the cost of equipment, the cost of staff, et cetera, et cetera, is considered by council, and we will definitely take your direction and implement it to the best of our ability if you would like to go with the other model as well. So we are seeking your direction and guidance on which one you prefer, and we'll just move that way.
Okay, um, you know, Jackson has, you know, that Mr. Dr. Wild and Councilwoman Dunn, they have two previous, two I G A's they have.
Um, and I, I'm just going with what you said. We did discuss entering into an I G A at our last meeting. And I guess my thing is, this didn't just come up. You had to have known this prior to today, just to bring this to us to discuss today.
So, so you don't think...
About I G A for public works to go with Peachtree Corners?
Also, yes, we bring it up today.
I'm saying this could have, this, this didn't just come up, somebody knew about this prior to today.
We had conversations with them last week, and we were trying to finish track, and we had...
But I'm saying, council is just finding out when we picked up our agenda. And this is just not right for us to continue, we're getting things at the last minute, for us to vote on at the last minute. And that's not right.
You received it when we received it, Ms. Jackson.
Excuse me?
You received it when we received it, so we literally met with them. I don't remember where...
No, 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 you're saying met. I'm talking about if you knew that it was going to be too expensive for public works, you knew this before last week.
Which is why we presented it at the last council meeting.
You didn't, no, 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 you didn't say, nothing about no I G A at the last council meeting. You said about sanitation.
No, so if you look at the presentation from last week, it definitely says a hybrid model. It doesn't, the vendor, no, we did not mention the vendor because we didn't know. It could be Peachtree Corners, or Johns Creek, or whoever it has to be. There are five or six cities that we looked at. Peachtree Corners is new.
But what I'm saying, sir, we're, this is, this is like a practice that's coming up. We're getting things at the last minute, saying we need to vote on it now.
What, what have you received at the last minute related to this council member? This item here?
No, no, not related to this item.
So I, I would love to focus on this item in the last...
Okay, but we're focusing on it, but I'm just saying, we can't vote on this today.
Conversation is two-way, John.
Okay, well, it's two-way.
Finish your statement.
Well, so if you would not like to vote on it today, you don't have to. If you would, what our other option is, and we're fine with moving towards that, and we'll take it. Because we, at some point, we've got to make a decision on service delivery. And so if you would like us to, we would happily proceed with the notion that we have provided information and our thoughts and our best advice, but council makes the final decision. And we will implement no matter what your decision is, whether it's on this laws, rules, and regulations, we're always going to implement it to the best of our ability. And if council would like for us to proceed in the manner that we bring on equipment and people, and et cetera, et cetera, continue the service model as desired, we meet with Fulton County basically every Monday to transition. We will continue to do that in that manner. This is the staff recommendation, and you always have the option to, you know, vote it up or vote it down and have us go in another direction. And respectfully, we will definitely proceed in whatever way you like.
Ms. Willis, Mr. Lee, and then Ms. Jackson.
I would like to say that, um, this is the city manager, I mean, Mr. O D., he did speak with, um, I know me and Proton Baker, when he met with us individually, he met with us as teams during the budget process. And he did have extensive conversations around public works. And the possibility of entering into an I G A with another city, or possibly even hearing out, and he was going to write a recommendation back. And the main reason was because of timing, us having to have Iowa transition completed by November. And he did say that he did not feel that they could do that in the timing designated to have transition completed. So that conversation didn't happen. Now, who the specific didn't know was going to be, at that time, he did not know. But he did say he was going to write a recommendation back to us. I would like to say that our transition must be completed by November 2018. We got less than 30 days to get this done. I don't see how possibly we're going to be able to transition public works at the current model from the county to the city. And especially with the cost that's associated with it. So it will be an epic fail if we don't get our transition complete. So I am, I am requesting that we act on the staff recommendation and allow him to go ahead and negotiate. He didn't say we had to approve, but allow him to at least negotiate and write a recommendation back to us.
Our city will transition day is November 7th, 8th? November 8th?
The 15th is the older transition. The 15th is when it was certified and when we say transition expires. But the transition of public works is slated for the 15th.
Okay. November 8th is the transition day, I still have to understand the right. So that, that is actually 45 days. We do have 45, just wanted to clear that up. Um, Mr. Mayor, you might want to start that, that five minute clock, because I have a lot to say. My road to this seat began three years ago, maximum. I was driving a bus for Martin, and they decided to outsource Martinville, which was the smallest unit and the lowest paid workers in the Martin system. It makes me very uncomfortable that every other city department came over as is. And now our lowest paid workers, the ones, the ones that we would have to bring up to 15, because everybody else is making like $14.06 or whatever. Our lowest paid workers are going to have to bear the weight of this privatization. It reminds me, I, I heard you say today, I listened at the work session, and I heard you say that long term, bringing over the department, the way that we follow the other departments, might be best. And it reminds me of the saying about service, you can get it good and cheap, but it won't be fast. You can get it fast and good, but it won't be cheap. You can get it cheap and fast, but it won't be good. And we have known that we've had to transition public works for over a year. Since we became for 18 months, we knew that this was here, and it was hanging out. And so I am also, as Councilman Jackson said, I'm a little uncomfortable that what seems to be happening now is that since the clock is running down, we're just going to have somebody else. Now, I'm not, I'm not completely opposed to outsourcing. I actually proposed outsourcing about six to eight months ago, when the only department that we had brought over was, uh, land use and zoning. And we didn't have a city manager. So we, we talked about it. We looked at the stone press model, and we looked at the same as Prince model, and, and quite a few of us were like, maybe we just need to outsource. But what we were told then is that we were too far down this road, that wasn't, that wasn't a good idea. So I'm delighted to see some council members have come around to this idea of outsourcing. But if we were too far down the road then, I feel like we are certainly too far down the road now. Um, I, I, I think that we should, I would like to see us continue to bring over these lowest paid workers in our city the same way that we brought over the highest paid workers in our city, the six biggest workers in our city. I would like to see everybody have that same opportunity.
Yeah, Mr. Jackson.
I want to go back in time a little bit, because I'm thinking, well, first of all, it really is a serious timing issue. But I think that we got here after we decided, well, let's talk to the county. I see what, let's talk to the county to see, you know, how this can work with, um, with dealing with them. Then it became an issue of space, getting space. Then it became an issue of equipment, and much of the equipment is old and beat up and was being asked, and I'm just going to be transparent about it, to pay market rate or to lease it at those ridiculous rates. So now we're in a bind. We know that we can't deal with going to them, and we also know, kind of overhead, we paid them the I G A, Lord have mercy, we could use a lot of that money right now, okay? So now we're between a rock and a hard place. So then what do we do? Then you go and try and get an alternative, try to be creative, try to come up with something. I get that part of it. But I think what my colleagues are saying is that there are too many instances where when we come to the meetings that we have blank sheets, and we have folders that says add-ons. And I understand you've done a lot of work, and I'm sure period of time, and I really commend you for all that you do. And I'm sure that you were late into the night, you know? But, um, but with this particular issue, and with it being, with us being so close to the deadlines, then it puts us between a rock and a hard place. So the first thing, the first thing that came to my mind was, I don't have enough information. How can I vote when I don't have enough information? The only reason why I'm struggling with it is that this is not a vote to enter into a contract. This is a vote that says, okay, you go over here and you start the negotiation, and then come back to us and tell us what that negotiation looks like. Will that negotiation take care of the lowest paid workers? What will it do for them? What won't it do for them? Um, and, and vet it as, as much as you can based on our, um, all of our concerns. So once you do that, when you bring it back to us, then either it's a yes or a no. But then you have to have another alternative, just in case we got a no when you come back. So I can live with that based on how backed up we are to the corner. And we have been backed up with every transition that we've had from A to Z with the county. And, 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 and we've had to make all kinds of concessions all along the way. And so, um, that's my position.
Mayor, I could chime in.
Yeah.
First, I think one thing that I would encourage the council to look at, so first, I know that you've had a lot of things happen over the last 18 months or whatnot. We've had six months to kind of coordinate some of these activities. And during that time, just during my tenure, we've had, uh, police and... And during that time, just during my tenure, we've had, uh, police and parks were within the first sixty days of arrival, and so those things, you know, they, they took precedence and we had to get that done. I don't know what happened prior to the six months here, but during the six months that I've had, um, we have been reviewing this process, and I think we're at the best place possible to make a decision. Secondly, while I would definitely say there could be a lot more information that was provided, I'd like to make the council aware that we have had a council meeting on September eleventh, September eighteenth, and September twenty-fourth. And it takes staff time to prepare for each one of those meetings. So it is important that you know that for every meeting that we have, and they're all less than, I mean, there are about two days to prepare for every meeting, so that you get your packet on time for Friday, it has to be some understanding on the type of information we have to provide in advance. So it is, you get your packet on Friday, we turn everything in on Tuesday. And so there are things that happen in between that time. So three council meetings within three weeks is just difficult to coordinate. So, uh, again, we defer to the council on what your decisions are.
I'm sorry, I, I just have a follow-up question.
I think I, what was it?
April ten, you got it.
Okay, um, thank you. I think that, uh, all right, we're clear. I think this is an interesting, uh, uh, dynamic, and I think that our public needs to know a little bit more about what's going on. Uh, as a city, we've had several things thrust upon us at the last minute, and that's what you're hearing resonate, uh, on our council. And I think that it's caused the trauma. And it being five million dollars, uh, makes it even more concerning. However, we were broken down in the silos in order to discuss our budget, uh, about a week and a half ago. And some of us were in twos, some of us were in, were in threes, and just like Councilwoman Wood has said, because we got through certain things quicker, we were able to discuss some other things in further detail that our colleagues didn't have an opportunity to do. And I think, I mean, for, for the most part, you have a situation where most of us are never even on the same page, and I find myself landing on that side because I've been edified a little further than other people. For example, Councilman Khalid told the mayor to start the clock because of his concerns. And I know that Mr. Donald, uh, the, the, the budget manager, Mr. Malazi, can all acknowledge as well as Councilwoman Wood, that every point that Councilman Khalid brought up, I brought up once we found out. If we're not forgetting, I'm a person that was, that authored the fifteen dollar minimum wage in the city. So, along with you, so I definitely have your same concerns. With that, I petition, uh, Mr. Donald about having the wages, what would the wages be like for these employees? What would the benefits be like for these employees? And, you know, he talked about how if we just got this horse together, all of those things could be negotiated after we started the process. At that time, he did not mention a vendor. He just said that this is an option that we could explore because it would be extremely severely costly to the city. So we understand that. We knew, what I knew in my meeting, that this was a possibility. So having that, knowing that we're not moving forward with a permanent decision, but knowing that we're trying to get a horse, and then acknowledging the fact that we have so many issues of how we understand and digest this information, we just don't want to accept it because it's seemingly last minute. It could cost us now, meaning that those of us who feel or have felt in the past that we had things thrust up against us at the last minute, this might really cost us, because we're, we, 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 we don't want to believe it, we want to be hesitant. And I understand that reservation, but this is an option that I'm telling you that I set through and gave the same pushback, and now we're just asking, I guess, from the city manager, from the assistant city manager, just to allow them to start a negotiation. Of course, uh, Councilwoman Gill even just mentioned it, hey, you need to have an option just in case it's no. So I believe we need to be reasonable. I mean, we went into detail about more than just this raggedy equipment, then we would be coming there, okay? And buildings as well, there's a lot that goes into public works. And I didn't know as much as I learned, if I, and I wouldn't be as informed if I didn't sit through that meeting the way I did. You went back at five-thirty and your meeting didn't even get to these same sentiments, because we spoke about it. So I think that we wouldn't be acting out of order to give them this authorization just to negotiate. If we don't find ourselves comfortable with the findings, we don't move forward.
Okay, I saw Ms. Willis and I get you, Jackson.
I want, I want to request for approval of an IGA negotiation for public works with the city, uh, Peachtree Corners, um, ATR twenty eighteen, zero to seven.
Second?
Second.
I've removed the second.
Discussion.
Um, so I wish that I had gotten the benefit of having that meeting, I had two budget meetings, we never got to these. Number one, I don't think that's a great process, because everyone walked out of budget meetings with a different assessment of the mission. But I go back to first what you said in the work session, that in the long run, it would be better, we would have more control if we brought these employees over. And so I'm here for the long run. When I say it's our hope to forever, I mean forever. So if we lose a little money this year, but it is better for us in the long run, I think that that is something that we need to weigh. Um, the second, the second thing that I would argue is that the clock is ticking. So while we're negotiating this, you've already said, we probably won't have enough time to do this right now. So if we take more time to negotiate, I'm talking about, uh, bringing, it sounds like you have concerns that we will be able to do this properly if we bring everyone in in-house by November. And so if we take time to negotiate and you come back and we're still uncomfortable and we say no, now we have even less time. And so my question is, what possible alternative could you come up with if the answer is no? Because I feel like saying yes, you're going to come back with a negotiation that says you all have to accept this or there is nothing else. What is, what is the other?
So I think my advice is, I want to be very clear so there's no confusion. I do not believe that we can afford to bring on everyone in the manner that we have in the past, not only because of staff, but mostly because of equipment. I believe, Mr. Malazi, am I correct, that the equipment estimates are about one point five million that is unbudgeted in the Fulton, that we have not been paying for that, and if we did fair market value, it's about one point five million?
That's right.
And so that's just for the equipment, if, I think that's purchasing at fair market value. And so that's, that's the equipment that does not suffice, meaning that's an additional one point five million dollars. That, so I'm a proponent of bringing over the staff. As a matter of fact, speaking with the vendor that works with, uh, Peachtree Corners, they are willing, anybody that can pass their HR process, they will bring them on. That's not the issue, is ensuring that people are employed. And remember, for our paying class plan, it is higher than Fulton County's, so they would have to, they would make more working for us. I believe that they would also make more than work, working with Jacobs, that is our belief, so we have to look at that. So the, the staff portion, I am comfortable with it because I believe that, one, we make sure that they remain employed, so that's not the issue. But it is us taking all of that on. What we have done in the past is, a person works for Fulton County, let's say the interest salary is forty thousand dollars. They work for forty thousand dollars, they get their cost of living increased every year. Then in addition to that, they get their benefits, yada, yada, yada. Well, you've been there ten to fifteen years, you're no longer making fifty, forty thousand dollars, you're making fifty-eight thousand for a job we have slated at forty thousand. So when you transition a person over, what you have been doing is paying the fifty-eight thousand dollars a year, which means you have that much more invested above your budgeted amount, which is why we have those minor fiscal pressures. And so continuing in that pathway is an expensive proposition. But not only is the personnel side expensive, now at a minimum to maintain the existing equipment, when you want a higher level of service, you have to pay an additional one point five million that is not budgeted. That is, that's a pretty penny to pay. So instead of this five point five million, the other model is now closer to seven million, and you haven't delivered a service yet. As you know, we receive our tax funding, um, after the beginning of the fiscal year. So we also have difficulties in how quickly you can bring those activities on, because you're paying before you receive your taxes. So there are a lot of challenges that I think we've talked about, not specifically around public works, but I would say we've been talking about these things for quite, at least since I've gotten here. And so the model, the other model, I just believe is too expensive. But again, I'm going to defer to the council, and we're going to figure out how to make it work, but we have to make sure that we're prepared to make concessions on service delivery and the quality of service we receive. How quickly can we get though, that equipment? And if we don't do it fair market value, we are looking at other options, but we're still leasing it, which again, is contracting out the equipment that you don't own. So there are so many pros and cons to it. I would gladly say, hey, I believe this piece will work, and if it doesn't, take the fall for it. If, if, if we're all going to take the fall, because we're in the, we're in it together. And if the other piece, if that process doesn't work, it's a tough decision. This is the toughest transition, which I believe by whoever was the city manager or whoever it was before pushed it to the last one to try to get as much research done as possible. Well, I've been here six months, and I'll tell you, in the research that I've done, the model that is best for us, I believe is the contracted model. But I want to have a little under six months to look at it, but this is our best swing.
And I may, the city manager talks about the equipment that we have at one point four, that does not include the smaller equipment like the lawn boards and the edgers and those types of things, so that cost is going further increase, not to mention the facility that we would, uh, have to pay for at fair market value. So while the other transitions took place at one dollar for the facility and one dollar for the various equipments, this one here, the county is seeking fair market value, which further exacerbates the cost for this public works transition. And the facility that they're operating out of is probably not, I mean, you know, the condition of the other facilities, this one is probably not far worse than those. So again, um, this one will be very costly to us.
One, one final, one final question. If we were to go with this model and it didn't work, or citizens weren't satisfied, would it be possible to later set this up in-house?
Oh, yes, that, that's the goal. I'm sorry if I haven't made clear on that now. So the goal is, the reason Peachtree Corners, it has the most flexible agreement of those other municipalities, and they're all year to year. What I would envision is, is in year one, which is the beginning of the fiscal year, we get everything set up. But the whole purpose is to transition it to be under our control. I mean, I'll be frank with you, I, I think that the folks who do our building permits are doing a good job. But I believe that if we were managing it ourselves, we can control the expenses and increase the revenue. I think that's the model that you do all the time, but the most important thing is it being successful out of the gate, no gaps in service, at least maintaining the service delivery, and then you transition it internally so that we are completely in control. I don't like to contract, period. So this is, I believe this is vital to our success.
You have not made that mark there, so.
Yeah, yes, okay.
Uh, Ms. Jackson, then, let's.
City manager.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, I do recall in our meeting, you all were saying that something was wrong with the building.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and I guess my thing is, and, and, and that kind of bothers me, then why didn't you take it personally?
What do you mean?
You were aware then that there was a problem. You said at that me, at, at our meeting, I think it was myself and, uh, Khalid and Ms. Gill, right. You said that the building, or you, or, um, Ms., uh, Melvin? I, I don't know your last name, I'm sorry, Ms. Gill. But anyway, you said something about the building, something was wrong with the building, all the things that was going to have to be done to it. So if you knew this then, then why didn't you say something when you were meeting with us? I don't appreciate it, and I guess that's where the problem is, that you had conversations with other council members, and they have rallied for votes, but yet we didn't know what was going on.
I, so I'm a completely lost, uh, council member. So you're saying that we told you, you're saying that we told you that there was an issue, that we believed that issues with acquiring the facilities, but you were concerned about why we didn't take it first?
No, I'm saying, why didn't you, yes, why didn't you tell us what the entire thing was, that you were not going to bring over public works, that you were not recommending this? This is my concern.
Again, it's our time.
I suggested CH two M some time ago, because I thought that would have been a better thing for the city.
Okay.
Somebody that knew what they were doing, because we were trying to figure it out. Bring over CH two M, but they said, no, it costs too much money. I had a gentleman come sit right in the audience before you came. They said it was too high. So my, my concern, I have no problem with CH two M in that aspect, but where I have a problem is the conversations not being, uh, talked about to everybody. Everybody should be privy to this information. If there is a problem, or if you all had concerns, that you were about to bring over, you would like for us to go into an IGA with somebody else, then every council member up here should know. Not close a door and go talk to Sally and John.
Okay, so, so council member, at the last council meeting, every council member saw the presentation that stated, which was two days after your, actually, the next day after those meetings, that said, we are looking at a hybrid model, and portion of that is contracting, and IGA is.
You're talking about contracting, I understand that, but you did not say anything about it.
The whole thing was about public works contracting, council member. The entire conversation was about public works contracting. There is no other contract that we are discussing except for public works.
We had discussed sanitation.
Sanitation, we're not talking about a contract, remember?
Yes, we did, we had talked about doing an IGA in sanitation, in sanitation.
So, no, during those meetings, we had talked about the Sandy Springs model, which we are discussing now. We talked about the Sandy Springs model, which would be regulated. We talked about that in every single, um, breakdown of the council meeting. We talked about.
Okay, good, I'll, I'll, I'll continue that, that section, because we did talk about that.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, I don't appreciate it. If you all are going to discuss something with one or two members, then everybody else should know what's going on prior to.
Ms. Green?
I'm here, your question. I heard you say, um, when you were talking about the IGA with Jacobs, I heard you say, you mentioned the word permitting. So are you talking about them taking over our permitting?
No, 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 I don't, I think you came, I think you came in on a separate part of the conversation. I was saying, I'm using that as an example, that, that permitting contract, again, I think they're doing a great job, I think they brought in more revenue than we projected, so much so, we had to amend the budget twice to bring the revenues in, but those expenses went up as well. If we were controlling it, then we would be getting all those revenues and the expenses wouldn't be going out. So my perspective would be, while you don't rush to change it, the goal should be to bring that service completely in-house at some point. It would be the same as public works, I'm just comparing the two. You start off contracting, get it set up, you got it under control, you bring it in-house.
So as you guys will know, that's a separate contract, public work is one that we're discussing, so I just wanted everybody to know that.
Correct, yeah.
I, I want to do the same next week.
Yeah, totally, yeah.
Councilwoman Wood?
I just want to make a point of clarification, we have our minutes included from our last previous council meeting, and the city manager, it states in the minutes, the city manager proceeded with public works process service model. Topics of discussion included ground maintenance, road, the sidewalk management, solid waste management, building, facilities maintenance, sweepings, and the streets now lighting, stormwater management, and water treatment. So the follow discussions on model of transition of public works and wages for employees transitioning. So we did discuss this in detail at the last council meeting, it's reflected in the meeting. And also, I would also like to make a point of clarification is that oftentimes, most of our votes, um, that occur, um, votes are. um that occur, um, votes of rallying and Mr. Shire, council, are not, is not privy to discussions that are had. Thank you.
Um, lastly, I just wanna add, just for the public, that implications is if there's backdoor conversations that everybody can't, can't have or didn't have or weren't privy to. I think that we all had scheduled meetings with the same group and they all had the same time period. That time period wasn't out. I believe in some of my colleagues' meetings, at least one of them, the questions went on and on so long that they couldn't get to probably where I was, from my understanding. Because Councilman Khalid made his point to reschedule his own meeting to go back at five thirty on the same day because of the repetitive questions, so that they couldn't get to the end where we were able to get to, where we learned what now is seemingly appearing to be privileged information. So I just don't wanna leave that out there as if like we're sharing information, everybody is not aware of.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of these questions.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I did make a motion, I did make a motion.
Okay, it's the second, the second, the previous question, there are seconds?
Second.
Properly move to the second, remove the previous question, any further discussion? Here ain't none, let's vote. Move to the previous question. Question, wait, uh, let's vote on the previous question. No, we're voting now to approve this I G A. Right, absolutely, alright. Do you have your own?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, before you go to the staff reports, would you like to move to them or all the other items that we added? We do have the legislative package, the sanitation model, trucking orders and the zoning contract items to reconsider.
Yeah, I think Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you know, the one, you want.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, let's, let's go, let's go forward with him, Mr. Gray.
First item in this presentation of the legislative package.
Oh, yes.
I added, I added the um, something called the consent agenda.
Emergency.
The emergency rule.
Yes, that is, that is good.
And then you have the zoning contract as well.
Yes.
That you would prefer, Mr. Mayor? You have the legislative agenda, the zoning um, uh, contract for the zoning ordinance and the repairs. Is there, would you just like? So uh, for the legislative agenda on September thirteenth, uh, council received the proposed legislative agenda with some insights from uh some of the colleagues. Uh, we compiled that information and provided it on the thirteenth, but have also included it in your add-on packet. I think that uh, council member Khalid as well as council member Raul both uh believe, which we strongly agree with, that council should uh comment and ratify this legislative package prior to it being sent to uh the delegation on our behalf. And so it was included, it is provided for you to be able to give comments if there are any, or authorize the staff to send it uh to the uh South Fulton delegation. Uh, we received the request from the delegation, I believe, on the ninth or tenth. And we talked about it at our September eleventh uh meeting. And then on the thirteenth, um, you received the memo. And so that's the timeline, and so we did not address it during the eighteenth, but we did put it on the twenty-fourth agenda. So again, we received it on, I believe, the ninth or tenth, discussed it on the eleventh, you received a memo on the thirteenth. Now it is the twenty-fourth, and although they requested it on the twentieth, we're asking for you to authorize us to forward it today.
I, I authorized the G four, the city of South Fulton. I move that we authorize G four, city of South Fulton, twenty nineteen state legislative agenda to our delegation. Also, is it possible for you to request Fulton to have a meeting with the council?
Yes, ma'am, I think they wanted, wanted to set it for the twenty-sixth, but you have strategic planning. And so once authorized, the letter with request that they reschedule, they know it's coming, but reschedule a meeting from the twenty-sixth.
There are seconds? Properly move to the second discussion. Here ain't none, all those are vague.
The second item is the uh zoning um contract. You have a memo in your uh, in your add-on packet. And I don't know, Mr. Malazie, is our purchasing manager here? Just, just in case he can answer any questions, but I can go over it at a high level. Um, as the council knows, you have uh requested that we procure uh a vendor to uh develop and edit the zoning ordinance um that is required. And staff does not have the full capacity to be able to coordinate this process. Um, our purchasing manager has coordinated the procurement process, it's been fairly lengthy, but I believe he has a vendor um that he is uh prepared to select. I believe we only may have even had one that responded that was capable. Um, but the, the reason it's on the agenda today is for the, the finance portion of it. We have it budgeted, I believe, for about a hundred and thirty thousand, but the bulk of that is in nineteen, but there is a share in F Y eighteen. This, with this being your last regularly scheduled council meeting for this fiscal year, authorizing us today means we can get the money for F Y eighteen out the door and then, and not interrupt the F Y nineteen budget.
I move that we approve uh the authorization for R F P number eighteen zero five zero orange. Uh. Is that, that we approved authorization for R F P number eighteen, payment of R F P number eighteen zero five zero order?
Yes. You gotta give her a five, two, the second, then there's a discussion, and there it comes.
Second, properly move to second discussion.
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about this uh environment infrastructure solution. Um, that's the first question. And then the second one is, um, to both of you, it's very vague in terms of if one is draft, secure contract to a city, city, what is draft, I don't know what that means. So specifically, tell me what it was.
Uh, yes, uh, the city um recognized the need for a new zoning ordinance. Uh, we've been using Fulton County's uh zoning ordinance, which is antiquated from, I believe, uh, the eighties. And uh with our, with the vision that we have for South Fulton, uh, we decided, or the city decided it was in its best interest to secure a new contract or to uh secure a contractor to assist with the draft of that ordinance. So to that end, we issued uh the R F P for a zoning ordinance. Uh, because of the timeline that we placed on the contractors, uh, instead of competing with each other, the uh, the interested vendors decided to get together and submit uh one proposal. And that is the, that is the contractor that we see Woods Environmental Infrastructure. Uh, it's uh, I guess it's a partnership between several uh vendors that are, that are uh, that staff is, that staff is familiar with.
Can I stop you, make a?
Yes, yes.
Who are those other vendors?
Ms. Reed is not here, so I'm not, I'm not all the way familiar with uh the vendors, but they are known, uh, they're known to staff uh to provide services in the area of zoning and uh ordinance drafting.
So even though this says that the contract is good with the title?
Yes, uh, they, the, the other vendors are.
Um, even though it says that the contract is good with environment and infrastructure solutions, they're just one party to a conglomeration of uh vendors that.
Uh, there are vendors that are signed on as subcontractors that will uh take uh different parts of the total effort. But uh Woods Environmental Infrastructure would be the lead in the effort and the others are subcontractors.
Okay, so, so I'm really glad that, that you said that because that helps us get to some transparency. Because this document should have that in it. Every last vendor that is participating in it, we should know that before we go upon it. So I'm not comfortable, but I'm so happy that you shared that so that we would know, um, that it's not just Woods. So my second question was about Woods Environmental Infrastructure Solutions. Can you tell me a little bit about that? How long they, their business, what their specialty is, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, I can't necessarily get into their, to their full, to their full background. Uh, but uh in their, in their proposals, they did indicate that they've uh done, they've done this service for uh several, several other cities. They do, they did provide a full, full reference. Uh, I can supplement that to the council. Um, I'm not fully, I'm not fully prepared to miss their uh references that go through that.
No, I, I didn't answer it, I didn't ask you, how was this? This, this stuff was done.
Yes.
I think we need to hear what she said. You must have that because we're asking the next decision by agreement, you know that. I mean, every, every part of that, especially regarding myself contractors and stuff like that. But it should, I just want to interject that, you know, to him, that if you go forward, you.
Uh, do we know that we, we taking notes right now?
She's gonna answer. I think he's on, he, he shared, uh, thank you. I uh, I want to make sure that I understood a little bit, and I feel understand now, thank you.
In presence, Gray?
Yes, Ms. Reed. I have been working on some things with zoning, um, in those areas. How do we get those to, whoever we're not charging, would all be allowed to do that? And when we have a timeline, when they give us a timeline, this is, this is what section we're working on now, uh, please give us your feedback by this day, what, what is that process now?
Uh, yes, uh, in their, in their proposals, they do have uh maybe approximately fifteen meetings that they have, uh, fifteen informative sessions that they have scheduled with council. And uh they have uh sessions that they're scheduling with staff. So there, built into the process is a lot of collaborations. And we will, the city will have an opportunity to exchange whatever information would be necessary.
And, and when, when do those meetings start? When will we see that scheduled?
Uh, the, they are, we are trying to get this up and running as soon as possible. So uh there is some flexibility built into their schedule. However, budget wise, they do have it in there where they are gonna be uh regular meetings with staff and regular meetings with council. So it's uh really a matter of getting with the contractor and setting up the timetable. Uh, we haven't gotten to that portion yet where we've uh sat down and sketched out the timeline.
I'm going, I'm going to ask for at least two weeks notice before we schedule a meeting. We, we just had a lot of meetings being scheduled three or four days notice. So I'm just gonna ask if we could get at least two weeks notice.
So Mr. Karle Lee, the way it's set up, they will be having one-on-one meetings with council as well, so first we would have to execute the contract. I think that's why it's hard to say what the timeline is. But once you execute the contract, their first order of business is to reach out to council that's in their plan. And then you would actually help them decide on their fifteen public engagement activities and things of that nature. So we will be able to, you would help to drive that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Doctor?
Doctor?
When can we receive the information related to the subcontractors? I wanna know who they are before I vote, because I don't have the full picture, I'm not voting the full picture.
I can have that to council this Thursday tomorrow.
That's good, okay. I'm gonna take a motion. Let's go. You got four one, four one?
Make sure I give my information. Next?
Uh, the final uh item uh is the actual approval of the emergency uh contracts related to uh roof repairs at fire station one, three and seven, not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand. Uh, again, this is an effort to spend these funds out of the F Y eighteen budget and not take those cost purposes into F Y nineteen. As mentioned, some of the facilities, so, again, I'll, I'll just be pretty frank with you. Still being fairly new and this being the first transition that I've had complete control over, we started to look at buildings and assessing the properties that we have been bringing on for the county. And instead of just assessing the properties that we would receive from public works, we have assessed every property or ordered assessments for every property. The first four that came back were fire stations one, three and seven, as well as the San Town Recreation Center. And so each of those assessment, assessments brought back a need for some, I guess, capital investment and fairly major repairs. And so these repairs on the roof, uh, some of the areas that the assessment brought back, and again, we have not received the final assessment, uh, I do not believe. But the preliminary showed uh mold remediation and asbestos removal uh amongst some uh additional repairs. And so this one hundred and thirty thousand for the three facilities would uh remediate the, the mold and the asbestos removal, as well as additional testing that is required after you remediate, as well as materials and labor for those three facilities.
So, I, it's my understanding for fire station one, there was a feasibility study stating that that fire station shouldn't include employees in it at all.
They shouldn't include, yes.
Okay, so why don't spend the money to repair a roof when that, that fire station is going to be pretty much demolished?
Well, I would not necessarily say that it is going to be demolished, and, and it may. Um, the requests for the roof repair, I don't have chief.
Have the, have the facilities managers here, has he had an opportunity to assess that fire station? Can he give some information on it?
He's welcome to definitely bring you some information on it, but he's still in the process of doing his own assessment of the facility. I think he has started on that process specifically for number one, because I think that's what you're asking about. But he's doing an assessment of every facility.
Can I get some information on, you might have to give me some information?
Oh, no, it's, it's.
So, um, thank you. Um, can you please give me an update on fire station number one? Like what has you assessed? How much do you think it's gonna cost to uh repair the fire station? And do you think it's feasible, want to put thirty thousand dollars into a roof?
Currently, we're uh still waiting for them to come in for the mold remediation. The asbestos remediation came in at uh twenty-one thousand, oh, twenty-one thousand, just for the asbestos mastic that's on the floor. Uh, the roof quote came in at three.
Hold, hold on a second, I think you all might want to hear this, because this is, this is, uh, we have to make a decision on this, this is. Yeah. I always leave. Thank you. I wish, thank you.
The, uh, roof came in at over, uh, thirty thousand dollars. We're still waiting for the, waiting for a vendor to come in and give us support for the asbestos, I'm sorry, the mold and the rebuild after everything is remediated.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My suspicion of Fire Station number one is a wrecking ball.
Mm-hmm.
Let me take, I was in, I was in Fort Lauderdale my hometown. And there was a fire station there on Waygate Road. That was a prefab place and they had a covered building. I went back to Fort Lauderdale last round this year. Their analysis, the most beautiful fire station you ever wanna see.
Mm-hmm.
I think that we need, we need to have a temporary solution, uh, to Fire Station number one. And all the money that we're gonna put into, I think we can tear that down, get it a prefab, it looks nice and put the trucks under something until we get ready to build. I, I think that's the most, better solution than having to take, we, she was just talking, you were talking, it was to let the mold, the mold go.
Right.
All right, well, obviously the mold ain't gone, all right? And we have to continue to, that puts people in harm way, that puts us in liability. So you can put, as long as you got the, you fix the roof and the mold is there, well, I don't know if it works, the rain or the mold. But, uh- It's just a, I just think we just get tagged, dog, one thing down, put up a temporary fire station, Chief Doug, you've seen temporary fire stations before, and put up a temporary fire station until we can do better.
So I, I think, Mayor, I think you, you, you all are hitting the nail on the head. And I would, I would go back to Ms. Jackson's comments on the previous piece about public works, and I want us to kinda just look at the steps. And so the first step is, we don't have a solution that we can send people to right now. And so we're taking folks out of the fire station, which is step one. So the second piece is to remediate as many issues in FY eighteen, providing us the time because the budget is passed, the assessments were ordered a little while ago, but you know, that process takes time. I believe that these, these buildings that we have, uh, taken on from the county, there are some other issues that are gonna pop up. And I think that's why we're looking at the public works model and none of these things are separate. These challenges are going to grow and, and we're gonna identify more problems even before we find a solution. So this is, we have the funding in FY eighteen to try to keep the status quo long enough for us to figure it out. And so that's why we're, we're making this request today. But I think you're right, and I think everybody has kinda said, you know, let's blow that whole thing up. But I think the first thing we wanna do, we inherited an issue and we don't want people to be in there another day. We'd actually already removed even before you guys gave us the approval because we just can't have anybody on our watch living in sub, or working in these subpar conditions.
Okay, so I would make a request from you, City Manager, that you investigate the possibility of having a temporary, of transferring that down to having a temporary, uh, facility.
Let me see the numbers.
Let's see what the numbers look like.
Well, I, I, I think, uh, Chief, uh, Butler had, had, uh, put up some, some trailers to put the firemen in. The only, uh, thing that we wanted to do was house the trucks inside the facility, uh, to keep them-
Oh, no, for all no trailer down. Ain't talking about no trailer. Okay, but a, a prefab building that looked like something, you know, that we can, uh, that we can, just look into it for a second and let's find out what this is.
And I just wanna know, we're still assessing, man, like- Yeah, sometimes. We just, we, we haven't gotten the final assessment back yet. So this is us trying to be proactive and responsive because we don't have enough answers. But I will, I wanna say this time because I think, you know, in respect to, uh, Council Member Jackson, if I was not clear enough on the other subject, I wanna be clear on this subject, that we do not have all of the information yet. We will receive it probably this week, the final assessment. And so at the next council meeting, we will have all the information and, and we'll have more information when we come back.
I just wanna know if that will go back-
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll, we'll have that.
So should we vote on this?
Yes, because this, but he, I'm talking about what he's asking for, like what are we gonna do with the facility? We, we don't know yet.
You lied to me, I'm sorry.
Um, so, yeah, you asked the question, you saying we should vote to repair the roof even though we know that it's such an-
Because you're authorizing us to get it done. If, so if, uh, the, the cost for, so we know this is the highest quote that we would have, right? We're still getting additional quotes, so that's why we're asking for the one thirty. Once we assess the total cost, then we would be able to say, hey, is it worth it for this? I think they already have them in temporary housing, et cetera, et cetera.
I don't rather take, I mean, I, I don't mind it, I, I would prefer to take the money to try to purchase a, a, a temporary building. Or put it towards a temporary building. I know that we wanna get this approved as a sophisticated expenditure, but I would prefer to take the money to put it towards a temporary building. We have known for years that Fire Station one needed to go before we became a city. And now, you know, that was part of, part of our passion during the budget conversation with Chief Few.
So, man, would you mind if I ask our facilities, man?
Sure.
So, Mr. Walker, I, I know we would not be able to enter into at least in this short period of time, but what happens if we remove fire, the cost for Fire Station one from this proposal? What happens if we just back those funds out because other roofs we, we've gotta do something about? But for this one, we back it out, I guess, Mr. Malazie, it's partially a question for you, the funds, the unused funds would go into the general fund for next year and I guess we'd have to make an, how will we address that, I guess, of the, the nuts involved?
So according to our discussions with the facilities manager, the only, they will need up to one hundred and thirty thousand to do something to make things that they are in rest while waiting for the big funding and big overhaul next fiscal year. There is money that has been budgeted for maintenance, during maintenance for next fiscal year. So up to one hundred and, uh, thirty thousand, because it's beyond the twenty-five thousand the money they can do, this is the only time you can authorize that money beyond the hundred and, beyond twenty-five thousand.
Well, I, I think what I'm asking is, is that, so they, they, the council is not in favor of putting another dime in the Fire Station one. And so what, what they would like to do is figure out a temporary facility to get Fire Station one online, is that correct?
Yeah.
And so with that being the case, it would have taken us one hundred and thirty thousand to just address the roofs. And so now the question is, we back those funds out, we take it out and they would approve Fire Stations three and seven because those roofs are in better shape, we take the money out. But how do we, what are the nuts and bolts for us to go from Fire Station one, not put another dime in it, but find a solution for, a temporary solution to replace Fire Station one? And I don't know, I think from your perspective, Mr. Malazie, we need to know how the money comes into play, but from you, Mr. Walker, we need to know how do we identify a facility and what is the timeframe for that?
For me, on my side, on financial, we can, we can give up money that's there that is okay, that we can give for this fiscal year. The rest of them, we can make arrangements, but the funding will be for next fiscal year.
And so, Mr. Walker, what, what is the timeframe and what is the process for us to identify a temporary solution for Fire Station one? Is that even something we can get done in this fiscal year?
Probably so. I could look into something that the mayor spoke of. Um, and I think we could probably get it done in a short-
Could, could we get it done, could we get a temporary facility done for the amount of money? Or can we begin a lease or whatever's necessary for the amount of money that was going to be allocated for this roof?
Temporary structures that Chief Butler, uh, identified, they came in at around eighty-seven thousand a piece. And that's the trailer that the mayor referred to.
They don't wanna do, I don't think they wanna do that.
So it'll be a significant, significant amount.
Well, we don't know what trailer that's in.
Well, I mean, you still have the permission and you still-
Double wide trailer? Like a double wide trailer?
Something similar to that. It's like a construction trailer.
It provides them the, so I think what Mr. Walker is saying for, um, for your identification, um, as well as in, in the rest of council, what he is saying is, is that without putting another dollar in the Station one, the total of one hundred and thirty would still cover it, but we would have to change our proposal. We would use the funding for roofs three and seven, make, make sure I'm right on this, for three and seven, and then the funding that was allocated for Station one, we would then use instead for temporary housing.
Yes.
And so if you guys are okay with that, and you could accept the staff recommendation with the amendment to it that the funds allocated to Fire Station one be utilized or you be authorizing us to get temporary housing up to that amount for, um, uh, Fire Station one.
Okay, so I wanna move that we, uh, approve the, um, request for approval for, uh, emergency roof repairs for Fire Stations, uh-
Three and seven.
Three and seven, three and seven, and then take that money allocation for one and apply it to temporary housing, set, for Station one.
I've removed the second. Any discussion? Here in the law rule of favor. That passes unanimously.
And you also have, um, uh, two items from the city attorney, the trucking ordinance and sanitation. Um, the other nine.
The trucking ordinance-
Amendment.
Well, the trucking ordinance, I, um, I, my recommendation is that we discuss that in executive session, um, cause there are, there is a right of litigation in certain items that we need to go over.
Give me that.
And then the sanitation ordinance, um, Mayor, if you want, let me know what order you wanna put this in, um, I can either do the sanitation ordinance first and then do the trucking or I can do-
You'll be voting right there or what?
No, the sanitation ordinance is out, it's fine to do publicly. Okay, so I'm just, uh, so this is the sanitation ordinance that we discussed earlier that incorporates the Sandy Springs model. Um, this, uh, FYI, I was asked to do this about nine days ago, so, um, ordinarily, this would be a process that you would do probably over two to three months. So a lot of you are seeing this initially, um, for the first time this week. It's also the same copy that I circulated via email, and I'll run through this, uh, very, very-
I think though, they did pretty good prior to this.
Yeah, most council members have reviewed this as well as Sandy Springs model, so, um, if, if, if you have questions, then-
If anybody have any questions about Sandy Springs model.
I just have some.
All right, uh, somebody make a motion, I'll entertain them.
Well, this is just first read.
First read, okay, I'm sorry. Good.
I don't like this model. I don't think we're anything like Sandy Springs. They have really high incomes, they have high home ownership. I have low homeownership in my district, uh, I have low income, so I'm concerned about, uh, me signing a contract with something here and having a truck roll down my street. On one day, my neighbor is signing a different contract, having a different truck roll down their street, on a different day, third person doing it, like we just paid our fees. Uh, I, I think, I think this model is very problematic for a lot of reasons, but I will say more about it when we have another meeting.
Okay.
I'm going to, we, uh, we just go to the second of the session to discuss mitigation, lose eight-
I'll move second. I'll move second.
Yeah, first name.
Let's go. We're going to go into executive session. Okay, um, we're going to, um, just to pick up before I ask my votes for the executive, but before I do that, I wanted to ask the attorney to talk about any action items there.
So there are no action items, but we do have to vote on one item publicly.
Okay, that's what I call action.
Well, no, but there were none.
Okay, none back there, I got you. Okay, go ahead.
So, um, so Mayor, based upon my discussions with the council about the trucking ordinance, um, and the, uh, consensus in executive session, my recommendation is to lift the restriction that is depicted on the item two that I can give to the city clerk, and this is the portion of Hall Road that is exclusively Union City jurisdiction, and to instruct public works to clean up the map, to unrestrict the areas that are exclusively Union City on both sides.
Okay, I'll go take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, it's up to attorney's recommendation.
Second.
I'll probably move the second in discussion. Ain't none, although the favors that pass unanimously. I wanna, was that it?
That's it, unless the council would like me to, um, separate any items of the ordinance, that's it.
I wanna go, I wanna go with that in session.
Close that session.
Second, probably move the second in discussion. Okay, the all of the favor? That passes unanimously.
I'm going that we admire, um, for Tuesday, uh, for twenty eighteen.
Second. I'll remove the second. Technically, I'll remove the second. I'll go to the favor.